Okay, thank you so much. So I would like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Flagstaff City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, October twentieth, two thousand and twenty. Additionally, just as a reminder to everyone that the Flagstaff City Council has the ability to recess into executive session for legal advice, should we so choose to do so. With that, can we please have roll call?
Mayor Evans?
Present.
Vice Mayor Shimonie?
Present.
Councilmember Aslan?
I'm here.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Here.
Councilmember Odegaard?
Present.
Councilmember Salas?
Present.
Councilmember Whelan?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Whelan, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Whelan, thank you. Vice Mayor, can you please read our mission statement?
My pleasure. The, the mission of the city of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I believe we have a motion for item number four A, which is approval of minutes from previous meetings by Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes as listed under item four A of the agenda, with the clarification that we are approving the minutes for both of the two October fifteen, two thousand nineteen E session meetings, specifically for the three o'clock and the three thirty meeting, which it wasn't quite listed that way, but that would, that's what we need to approve. And I have one other change. For item eleven, the last word should read Citizenship in the Community Merit Badge. And I had previously emailed these to our city clerk, so she's aware of them.
Mr. Odegaard, are you providing a second?
Uh, yes, Mayor, and then I also have an amendment to the motion of approval on, uh, and I already talked to our city clerk about this on page seventy-nine of our agenda concerning the date of Tuesday, October fifteenth at three thirty, that Councilmember Salas was not listed in the attendance that day.
I second the amendment, McCarthy.
Okay, so there was a motion made by Mr. McCarthy and a second by Mr. Odegaard to approve the minutes from previous meeting with the clarifications as were stated during the time of motion. City Clerk, does that work?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Council, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. We're now down to item number five. Item number five is public participation. Public participation for items that are not currently on our agenda. While council can listen, because they have not been agendized, we cannot respond back to anything that we might hear. It's my understanding that we do have one public comment, at least. This would be from Dan Folk, who is our Community Development Director. Mr. Folk?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Evans, Vice Mayor Shimonie, and Councilmembers. This is Community Development Director Dan Folk. Uh, one of my great pleasures working here is, uh, working with our community development leadership team. And so this afternoon, I'd like to recognize our building official, Amy Palmer. Uh, Amy was recently awarded Building Official of the Year by the Arizona Building Officials Organization, which is also known as ASBO. Uh, Amy was nominated for this by two of her staff members, which I believe demonstrates her success as both a supervisor and a leader. Uh, in the nomination, Amy was cited for a commitment to ASBO, currently serving as the treasurer. Her commitment to continuing education, both as a participant and an instructor. Locally, she recently led the process for the adoption of our new suite of building codes. You'll recall that work, uh, which was completed last year. Amy worked closely with our sustainability program to include the most recent energy codes, as well as other related measures. Uh, in the nomination form, Amy was cited as bringing fairness and compassion to her work for both customers and staff. Uh, Amy also completed her Certified Public Manager Program a couple of years ago at ASU, and she's a very effective spokesperson for building professionals and the important work they do to keep our community safe. So we're all very pleased to congratulate Amy for being recognized as the Building Official of the Year for the state of Arizona. And so please join me in congratulating her. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Folk. Um, at this time, there are no other public comments, so we'll go ahead and move down our agenda. We're now to appointments, which is six, which is six A. Um, consideration of appointments would be for Parks and Recreation Commission. Staff's recommended action is that we make one appointment to a term that's expiring in August two thousand and twenty-three. I believe that that fell on me to make the, um, appointment or to recommend the appointment. I'd like to go ahead and recommend Ryan Martin for a reappointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission at this time.
And this is Charlie, and I second that.
There's been a motion by myself, um, and a second by Mr. Odegaard to reappoint Ryan Martin to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Is there any further discussion, Council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. We're now down to seven. Seven is our public, or excuse me, our liquor license public hearing. We have one such hearing today. This is a consideration in action on liquor license application by Amy Nations, Dirty Birdies. This is located at twenty-two eighty-five East Butler Avenue. This will be a series six and a series twelve. These are new applications. I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Staff's recommended action is that we open the public hearing, receive public citizen input, and then close the public hearing. So at this time, the public hearing is open. I see that Mr. Odegaard, do you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I would like to recuse, uh, recuse myself for this agenda item, uh, seven A for there is a probably a conflict of interest, so I'll be happy to join when we get to Agenda Item Eight.
Okay. So can the clerk please make sure that the record, uh, the minutes note that Mr. Odegaard has recused himself from this discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
And can our officer provide us with the overview?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, good afternoon, Council Mayor Ryan Turley. Here from the police permit to answer any questions regarding the application before you. And I also believe the applicants are also present for any questions.
Okay, Council, do we have any, um, questions for the, our officer or for the applicant? I see, um, Ms. Salas, can you ask the question but not make the motion until after everyone's had the opportunity to, to, um, weigh in? I'll come back to you for the motion. Ms. Salas, your question?
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, uh, just out of curiosity, I, I just want to learn from the applicant why, why the place is called Dirty Birdies. It, it certainly catches attention.
This is Amy Nations, I'm the applicant. Um, I'm, I work with Dirty Birdies. Uh, I have no idea where the name came from. Uh, if one of the other gentlemen are on the call, they could answer that. I've never been asked that question before.
Okay, uh, this is Karan, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So just to like kind of answer that, uh, we just wanted to kind of have a fun, fun sports bar kind of name that kind of felt fit with, you know, just having a good time and more than that, just like birdies being, being, you know, a little bit, uh, uh, you know, kind of on the fence with what it could mean, but also birdies as in like, you know, golf or anything like that, sports related. So it was, you know, it was just a, a play on words more than anything else, I would say. And it was just kind of, you know, something that wasn't so politically correct and just, you know, not just such a cookie cutter kind of, you know, biz, sports bar. We wanted to kind of, you know, be a little bit different and unique with that name. So that's why we kind of came up with that. And it's actually my, my, you know, I own the ski house and some of my buddies actually at the ski house, we were all brainstorming for like hours and hours and my partners. And we were, came up with a list of names and everything that we came up with was so generic and, you know, we, we all agree Dirty Birdies for the golf aspect, for the, uh, kind of, you know, a little bit of, I guess, you know, I, what, I don't know what the exact word would be, but just a little bit kind of not cookie cutter, that's kind of what we wanted to go with.
Okay.
So that's how the name came, yeah.
Yeah, well, well, thank you, thank you, Mr., Mr. Karan Patel. I mean, birdies, uh, that, uh, stands for, you know, uh, like a sports bar feel and of course, birdies, uh, comes to, to golfing. Okay, so I was just really curious of the name and it certainly caught my attention. Thank you.
Well, I'm glad it did, good.
Mr. McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Um, before I make my primary comments, I would like to say two things. One is that getting a liquor license is not a right, it's a privilege. And, uh, that, oh, the other comment I wanted to make is that since I've been on council, I think there's only been one time that I voted against a liquor application, specifically a recommendation for approval to the state. But in this case, I have some concerns in that within the last three years, uh, two of the applicants have had fairly serious, uh, criminal charges filed against them. There was a case of a, uh, uh, driving under the influence of, and that was in February of two thousand seventeen. There was an arrest for theft. There was a unlawful, uh, means of transportation, which apparently, uh, I looked into that, means that they borrowed someone's car without permission or kept the car longer than they had permission for. Now, some of these charges were dropped, some of these charges were not dropped. But, uh, I just wanted to say that I think I will be voting no on this application if we get a motion to, for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Did the applicant want to speak directly to what was just stated?
Um, so I'm a little confused on, you mentioned a lot of charges. There's three owners on this business. Um, the DUI, that was, that was me and that was two thousand seventeen. Biggest mistake of my life, uh, probably one of the dumbest, stupidest things that I've ever done. And from that point, I would say that I will never, ever, ever drink and drive and you will never find me behind a wheel. Um, again, that's the most embarrassing thing that I've ever been a part of, especially just being a business guy in Flagstaff. And just what I've learned from that when I was twenty-seven years old is that, you know, that's just so stupid. And, um, you know, again, my deepest apologies to Council and everyone in the, in the community of Flagstaff. Um, I'm ashamed of that and, you know, I truly couldn't be more regretful of my actions, so. But besides that one, the other few, um, I'm unaware of as far as the shoplifting, um, and, uh, the, um, so I, I can't really speak on behalf of, you know, that one.
Well, the other charges were made against Stephen Alvin.
When, what year was that? Just so that we can kind of, really, really long?
I think maybe the police officer could answer that. Uh, I believe it was in the, uh, in the, uh, packet, but I don't have the packet up in front of me. I could pull it out.
Well. It, it was in nineteen ninety-eight.
Nineteen ninety-eight. So twenty-two years ago.
So my apology, I was unaware of that. I, I actually was still a toddler when Steve was at that age, during that time period. Um, I, Steve's, you know, he's a fifty-five-year-old guy that's, has a family and I don't think, you know, that those kind of criminal past would ever come back up in his life ever again. But I know the, the kind of man Steve is and I know that even he would feel very embarrassed to even have that brought up in, you know, a conversation like this. We're, you know, that's, we've definitely made mistakes and honestly, I've learned from every mistake. And it's, it's so embarrassing, but all I can say is that it will never happen again. And it truly is, you know, I'm truly ashamed of it. So apologize to everyone in Flagstaff for that, you know?
Do you have any other, um, questions?
Can anyone hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Hello? Oh, this is Steve Alvin, I'm sorry, I couldn't get my phone to work. Again, that was a very stupid time in my life. I would like to speak on behalf of that. You know, I've never even had a speeding ticket since then. Um, it was a very stupid time in my life. I was very confused, um, going through some hard situations. And, um, I did get in trouble and they, they were expunged. And I've had in the city of Flagstaff, I've had four liquor licenses. I have never been questioned about my ethics, about, um, who I am as a person or anything. And I take that very seriously and it was a huge mistake in my life. But I was hoping that again, we wouldn't bring up something that was twenty-five years old. Um, again, it's just something I've tried to put behind me and I've been an outstanding citizen of Flagstaff. Uh, paid my taxes, done my dues, put tons of people to work. And, um, I'm very passionate about that, so, uh, just hopefully you could forgive me on that. And that's sort of really disturbing that we look at those dates, we bring that up twenty-something years later, crazy. That's it.
Ms. McCarthy, do you have anything else? Mr. McCarthy? Okay, I'm going to move on to, um, Vice Mayor.
I'm sorry, I was on mute and I'll make this brief. Uh, the only comment I wanted to make is that whatever recommendation we make is to the state and the state actually makes the final decision. So like in the one other case where the council voted against or recommended against a approval, the state ended up approving it. Okay, I yield. Sorry, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you to the applicants on the call today. Um, I, I did read the report from the police department and I also saw that, Karen, so I appreciate you being vulnerable and being honest with us. Um, Karen, I did, I did want to follow up on that conversation that you're just having, you know, given that you all are going to be open till two AM on the weekends. Have you had any new insights, being in the position that you're at, in terms of how to best prevent people from drinking and driving? Do you have, I'm just curious, um?
You know, that's a great question. And you know what? The, the biggest thing I've learned is just, I, so I, I still, I, I still go to my sports bars because I love football, I love golf, I love sports, and I still go out. But I just plan a lot more, or I, I, I just organize. I leave my car at home if I know I'm going to go downtown. As far as the implementations that I'm going to have in my bar, you bet, I'm going to be so, I mean, that's one of the biggest, again, embarrassments in my life. So I'm really going to make it a point for my staff to know where the limits are and really try to do their best to manage, responsibly serve people. Because I think if we can have an idea of kind of, you know, how, how, how much people are drinking and do the best that we can with providing a service to call them an Uber or a Lyft or a taxi. And, because I know that sometimes late night right now, um, there's no Ubers available. So I've got like three different cabs companies that still are in, in, in Flagstaff that will still pick us up. So just kind of really educating my staff on how to help someone instead of being like, you know what? Uh, that's not my responsibility, because it is our responsibility and we're a community and more than that's my business and I care about everyone that leaves my door. I don't want anyone to get harmed. So just more of an emphasis on training on how to protect people and really get home safely and not have DUIs and drinking and driving happening in our community.
That's great, I really appreciate your comments on that and, and I wish you all luck. I, I, I think it's.
Thanks, man.
And, um.
You know, I really appreciate that, because you know what? I've been in Flagstaff a long time and there's no sports bar on this side of town. So I know that it's, I know people in the community get worried about that, but still, I think it's just a great thing for this side of town and locals.
Local run, I love it.
Thanks, man.
I'm going to go back to, um, Ms. Salas. You had a question and then I believe a motion?
Yes, I thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, you know, I, I'm hav- having run events with, with liquor license, uh, I'm familiar with the process that, uh, there's, there's like a cut of time, you know, uh, uh, for your last call for service, for, uh, for bar service. For, in this case, um, if, if, uh, if, if the bar closes, uh, if the, uh, the bar closes at two o'clock in the morning, what's your last call for drinks?
I think one fifteen, one thirty, I think one fifteen, one.
Yeah, one fifteen will be last call. Um, one fifteen will be last call, one thirty will be enforced and two o'clock, everyone must leave.
Uh, thank you for that clarification. So that's pretty much a, a standard practice for all liquor license holders, where you do a last call, not, not, uh, later than thirty minutes before your facility closes, uh, to make sure that, you know, everyone uh, have the chance to sober up and get their rights. Um, and then I have a question to Mr., uh, I'm sorry, to, to our police officer, Sergeant Turley. And I think I brought this up, um, the last time we had hearing for liquor license. It will be helpful to indicate in the police report summary, um, especially when it's calling out history of criminal cases, um, by, uh, I mean, involving applicants, is to include in a report that the, 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 the violations were, you know, there, there has, the errors have been rectified, uh, which, you know, which kind of shows the full circle of the criminal case history. And it also shows how, uh, restorative justice. Because this, you know, the, I just want to be mindful that, you know, we, of course, we're digging into the past of, of, of liquor license, uh, applicants, but, but we don't want to be, uh, condemning them for, for their old sins that were already been forgiven or they have already served, served sentence or, or paid a fine or other, other, uh, um, restorative justice measures. So just, you know, just something to keep in mind. Um, and, and I, and I give the, the space for Mr., I mean Sergeant Turley to speak up if, if he, he wants to before I make the motion.
Uh, yes, ma'am, Sergeant Turley here. I haven't indicated that, uh, what the final conclusion was with the court case uh, in each individual case here. Um, just so that I'm clear, what you're asking for in the future is to find out sentencing, if there is a sentencing for the individuals, ma'am?
Yeah, or, or something to kind of really kind of conclude, you know? Because I know, I know in one of the, the paperwork that the applicant has, has filled out, like, okay, I, I've, I've, I've done community service, I pay, I've paid a fine, I've done this to, to, uh, you know, a punishment for, 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 uh, the crime. So just kind of like a quick summary on, you know, okay, these cases have been, have been resolved and, you know, in, in this way. Yeah, so something to that effect would be appreciated. Thank you, Sergeant Turley.
You know, before you make the motion, uh, Mr., Sergeant Turley, do you have a follow-up?
I was just, uh, saying yes, ma'am, to Ms. Salas.
So, um, I want to, um, ask if there's any more, um, comments um, coming from the public or if not, I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing. I do have a comment before you make your motion, Ms. Salas. You know, I, I want to make sure that we're all mindful about something that Mr., uh, McCarthy said. Because I do, I do understand, you know, in listening to the applicants and their responses to, you know, the, um, the background, the history that was publicly aired, there's some frustration because something happened twenty, thirty years ago. There's some frustration because, um, it was an embarrassing time, it happened and we want to move on. But something that Mr. McCarthy said was key. You know, we as council members are charged with this responsibility and we don't have the opportunity to, you know, have a side conversation. Everything we do is done publicly. So that is why Mr. McCarthy, in doing his due diligence, said, I want to talk about these things, because I think it's very important, especially when it comes to something like a liquor license. So I just think that we all, um, you know, I'm pretty sure that was awkward for Mr. McCarthy to have to ask those questions, just like it was awkward for the, um, for the applicant to have to say that happened twenty years ago, thirty years ago, or I'm very, I'm sorry that I got the DUI and I've learned from it. But I just want to make sure that we're mindful about the fact that when I heard Mr. McCarthy ask those questions, I heard him ask those questions as a council member who was doing his due diligence to make sure that his vote was going to be the correct vote for the community. So I just want to make sure that we're all aware that it's not like sometimes we want to ask the questions, but that's part of why we were elected. Ms. Salas?
Um, very well articulated, Mayor, thank you. Um, I just also want to point out that, uh, as I make this motion for approval, I'm sorry, I, I, as I make this motion to forward this application to the state with the recommendation for approval, I am very mindful of the fact that, uh, the, the applicants are, have been around Flagstaff um, for over twenty years and have been in, involved in businesses, uh, serving, serving food and, and liquor, like they used to have, they used to own Horseman Lodge, they used to own, uh, La Vera. Uh, they, I believe they own the Northern Pines. And then another, and another, and another site that hasn't been reopened yet downtown. And they are taking over the location of this new bar, uh, which be, be called Dirty Birdies, but that bar's location was the, if my memory serves me right, uh, a porkish pub slash, uh, country house. I hope I'm right with those names. Um, so they, and I have, and they have, in, you know, during this time of the COVID pandemic, they have invested in, in taking over the, the, the property and remodeling it. And now they want to open it into a new, uh, kind of sports bar on that side of town. So again, I reverberate my, my motion to forward the application to the state liquor board for the recommendation for approval.
Is there a second?
Mayor, this is Kevin. Did you, I didn't hear if you closed the public hearing or not, I, I'm sorry if I missed it.
I did close the public hearing, I was so proud of myself, I remembered to do that.
Just wanted to ask for Sterling.
I know, I was thinking about Sterling when I did it. Is there a second? Council?
Okay.
So there's been a motion made by Ms. Salas and a second by the Vice Mayor. Is there any further discussion? Mr. McCarthy?
Um, Mayor, I'm going to vote yes on this. Uh, and I just want to say that I appreciate the, uh, discussion we had here. And, uh, I'll admit that I've made a few mistakes in my life and I outgrew them and learned from them. And it sounds like these applicants have learned from their mistakes and, uh, will, are pledging to us that they'll be responsible. So based on that, I will be a yes vote.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. There's been a motion made by Ms. Salas and a second by, um, the Vice Mayor to forward this with a recommendation for approval. If there's no other comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion does carry, thank you. I'd like to go ahead and welcome back Mr. Odegaard to the dais. We are now down.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
We're now down to item number eight. Item number eight is consent items. We have eight A through eight E. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as written?
So moved, McCarthy.
Is there a second? So we have a motion made by Ms. McCarthy. Ms. Whelan, are you providing a second or do you have a comment?
No, Mayor, I, I have a, a question on D and E.
Okay, so Ms. McCarthy, can you amend your, um, motion? Or can you withdraw it?
I withdraw my motion and then move that items eight A, B, and C be approved.
Is there a second?
I second that, Mayor.
There's been a motion made by Ms. McCarthy and a. There's been a motion made by Miss McCarthy and a second by Ms. Whelan to approve a consent agenda items number A, B, C. Um, is there any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Are there any opposed? Okay, we're going to go ahead then and go down to, um, consent item number A, C. Ms. Whelan? A, D, I'm sorry, Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the, the question that I have uh, for staff is, um, I noticed in the report that this has not come before council before. Uh, has it come before the commission? I, I didn't find that anywhere in the report, or maybe it's there and I just have not seen it.
Planning and zoning, did it come before planning and zoning is my question?
Good afternoon, Council. This is Tiffany Antle, um, Planning Director. On Twenty Four Oak, this is what's called a modified subdivision plat. So it goes through a pro- because it's less than four lots. It goes through a process of a concept plat review, which goes through our IDS team, and it goes through final plat review. It does not go through the preliminary plat process. Uh, preliminary plats are usually what go before planning and zoning commission. So this case did not go before the planning and zoning commission. Final plat only.
Okay, thank you. And Tiffany, same question about E and, um, what happened to the cohousing community?
Before we take E, um, can we finalize D? We do have applicant who would like to speak to D. So if we could take care of D first, um, then we'll move on to E. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe that we are trying to get them on the line right now.
Okay. Are we not successful?
I am not seeing them back on. Um, hang on just a quick second for me, Mayor. I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay.
Stacy Fobar, were you able to get them on the line?
All right. Are you all ready for him? I'm going to, uh, take him off of mute now. Okay, sir, we are ready for you.
I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, we are ready for you.
Hello?
Yes, I can.
All right, sir, we're ready for you.
Okay, what?
Is there a question?
We don't have a question. We're the applicant.
Did you have a statement that you wanted to make at this time?
Um, no, we don't. We're just here to answer questions with Neil being gone.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Council, do you have any questions for the applicant? Okay, is there a motion? Okay, we have, um, Vice Mayor. I can't.
I was muted. I said, thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the applicant for being with us.
I'm sorry, he, uh, he, they are just talking now. Um, they do not have any, um, hold on, I'm sorry.
I do have a question.
We do have a question, um, Ms. Fubar.
Oh, one moment. Let me see if you will be able to hear it. Okay, please go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you for joining the conversation and being with us. Um, I was curious to hear more about what happened to the cohousing project. I do appreciate that there's a density component that is being changed here to, you know, accommodate more folks, but I did, I did appreciate that cohousing plan as well, if you could speak to that, thank you.
The. Yeah. We are on eight D right now. This has to do with the consideration and fina- approval of a final plat. This is for.
My question was about process, not the, not the project, was about process.
Yes, I got that.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, are there any more questions for the applicant on number eight? Number eight D? Okay, if not, is there a motion?
So moved, Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second, this is Charlie.
There's been a motion made by Ms. Whelan, there's a second by the Vice Mayor. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay, now we're down to eight E. I'm going to go back to Ms. Whelan.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and Ms. Antle, my question is basically the same. Uh, and then I wanted to ask if, if the, uh, owners were here, uh, what happened to the cohousing community? It, it looks as though we're certainly going to a much higher density. Uh, but I also know that we need cohousing in, in our city. So if you could give me some history, I would appreciate it.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, uh, Genevieve Parthree is the, um, project manager on this, so I would like to hand it over to her, but this, this, um, application did follow the standard subdivision plating process. So Genevieve, if you're available, um, and you're comfortable answering those questions, thanks.
Sure, thanks Tiffany. Uh, so this did go through the preliminary plat approval process, so that involves going through planning and zoning commission as well as, um, going through council. Uh, it got approved, uh, by council. The, the preliminary plat got approved on June seventeenth of this year. Uh, that was with Elaine Avery as the Planning Development Manager, but she's since retired, so I'm taking this final plat through. Uh, in terms of the question about cohousing, uh, one of the owners is here, uh, Blake. So Blake, would you mind, uh, providing some background on the cohousing? And, um, be able to answer that question?
Genevieve, this is also Guillermo Cortez with SWI Engineering. I can, uh, if Blake cannot answer that question, I believe Tom Brewster was also listening, but was unable to log in, so I can try to take an attempt.
Sure, Guillermo, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, Council, Guillermo Cortez, SWI Engineering, One Ten Westdale. My understanding is from Tom Brewster, one of the other applicants, is they did try to do the cohousing, uh, that they, but they were not receiving, uh, enough participants. Uh, ultimately, when we looked at doing higher density, we figured we are providing more housing. Um, so ultimately, getting the community more housing was a better way to go versus trying to wait for participants.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So going back, uh, Genevieve, can you tell me, on, on the staff report, is it me, or I don't see what, uh, planning and zoning has said?
Uh, so, you know, on the, I'm looking at the staff report, so I, I didn't include the planning and zoning commission decision on there. I just included the council decision uh, in the section about there being a previous council decision, uh, but in the future, uh, so all these preliminary plats do have to go through P and Z. But in the future, I can include that as well, so that you have that information, that it's more clear.
Thank you very much. That's very important, um, at least to me. So thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, everyone.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and Guillermo, thanks for being with us. And, um, and Genevieve, thank you as well for the report. Um, Guillermo, my question is, you know, Council later today is talking about a housing emergency declaration. And I too am glad to see some more infill here to address our housing need. I do, I am curious to see more cohousing developed in Flagstaff. But in seeing more density, if that's the direction you all are hoping to go forward with, you know, we're learning a lot about the needs of our community in terms of the different AMI ranges. And someone who's a service worker, working, you know, a standard minimum wage job can really afford, you know, I think it's sixty AMI or even thirty AMI amongst other populations. And so my question for you is, is there any potential thought of, um, being able to address some of our affordable housing needs with a percentage of this project?
Uh, that's a great question, Adam. Uh, thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, actually, the development, the overall development agreement of Rio Homes. Uh, Rio Homes came, oh man, I think it was like two thousand four, two thousand five, when it was actually developed. And it actually had an affordable housing component to it, and it actually met those uh, previous to this plat. So it's actually been met in the development agreement. And now we're just moving forward with the rest of the development. So does that answer your question that overall it has met a, uh, actual affordable housing portion of it?
That does help. Um, I know that you, you aren't obligated to do anything else, but you know, considering just the density bump between the original plans and what you're, what you're receiving now, I was just hoping that maybe a few more parcels could be, you know, sixty AMI, but, um, that's my, I guess, my question more directly.
You know, I would say that probably the, if the owners were here, they would probably say, you know, since we are at final plat, maybe this is a little late in the game, that maybe at preliminary plat, or, uh, we could have asked that uh, of, or the council could have asked that of, uh, of the applicant and or planning and zoning, but at this point, probably they would like to stick with it as, since we are, uh, here at the eleventh hour. Um, but, you know, and, and hopefully do it on the next project.
Sure. Absolutely. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any other comments on this particular item? Okay, is there a motion?
McCarthy moved to approve, uh, eight E.
So I think you need to give me more than that, because we're going to have to go back to the previous motion. So is your motion to, uh, approve the final plat and authorize myself, um, to sign? And this. Okay.
Yes.
Is there a second?
This is Charlie, a second.
Okay, so there's a motion made by Mister McCarthy and a second by Mister Odegaard um, for approval of this, and this would approve the final plat to authorize myself to sign the plat and the city's subdivider agreement when notified by staff that the records are ready, the documents are ready. Is there any further conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We're going to go back to item number, um, eight D. Um, because our city attorney, um, I wanted to comment on this, and I believe he would like to comment on this because while there was a motion, the motion wasn't fully read out. Would that be it, Mister Finsell?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And yeah, the motion was just so moved. And yes, I would like a little more detail on what the motion actually was. So if we could just redo it, that would be great.
Okay. So Ms. Whelan, was your intent to make a motion that we approve the final plat with conditions outlined in the staff summary and its attachments and authorize myself to find, sign the final plat when notified by the Development Review Board that all conditions have been met and the documents were ready for recording? Ms. Whelan?
Yes, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, was that the second that you provided?
I'm so sorry, Mayor.
That's okay.
Yes, that's, that's it.
Vice Mayor, was that what your second was about?
Sure was.
Okay, so Council, I'm just going to ask you guys to reaffirm that vote that you took on item number, um, eight D. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any, any opposed? That motion carries again. Thank you. Mister Finsell?
Thank you, Mayor. Good to go.
Okay. Let's go down to item number nine A. These are routine items. First up is a consideration approval of joint funding agreement between the United States Geological Survey and the City of Flagstaff for continued funding support toward the Sea Aquifer Monitoring Program in the amount of seventy-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Staffs recommend actions that we approve this agreement um, to contribute seventy-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars from October first, two thousand and twenty, to September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. And that we authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents. Staff?
Uh, hi, Mayor.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Thank you.
And Council. Yes, um, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is Erin Young, Water Resources Manager. Um, I'm prepared to answer any questions for you. I have not prepared any talking points. I'm happy to, um, touch on them if you'd like.
Council, do you have any questions, um, from Miss Erin? Is there a motion?
Mayor, this is Jim McCarthy. I can make a motion. I move that we approve the joint funding agreement with the USGS to contribute, uh, seventy-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars from October first of this year through September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Miss McCarthy and a second by the Vice Mayor. Are there any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We're now down to item number ten. Item number ten is our public hearing items. We have one public hearing item today. This would be ten A. This is a consideration and adoption of development fee study in ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-five. Development fee study prepared by Teschler and Feis and an ordinance of the Flagstaff City Council amending the Flagstaff City Code, Title III Business Regulations, Chapter Three dash eleven Development Fees by adopting the revised Public Self-Safety Development Fees. Staff's requirement action at this meeting tonight, October twentieth, two thousand and twenty, is that we read ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-five by title only for the first time. Um, so I'm going to go ahead and, do I need to open this public hearing?
Yes, Mayor.
I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing at this time and take public comment. I do believe we have one public comment, um, request from Mister Joe Galley, who is with the Flagstaff, the Greater Flagstaff Chamber of Commerce. Mister Galley?
Go ahead.
Uh, Your Honor, members of the council, this is Joe Galley, One Oh One, West Route Sixty-Six, uh, Senior Advisor for Public Policy. We have, uh, had a position on this item for, uh, more than a decade. That position's not changed. We're opposed to your action tonight to add increased cost to development per unit, uh, for any reason, uh, making housing more expensive. Uh, we know that these costs are direct pass-throughs to the added price of the home. And, uh, we also know that there's been the age-old argument that growth should pay for growth, but we, the other fact we know is when we look at things like Timber Sky and Canyon Del Rio and Juniper Point, all those undeveloped areas. When we bring those thousands of new units online at the city, they're all of a sudden generating millions of dollars in new property tax revenues to the general fund. And those are the revenues that, uh, you, as our fiduciaries, are to be using uh, when you need to buy new police radios or when you need a new ladder truck. And then the reality is, if you need a big-ticket item like a new ladder truck, and we don't have the funds through those new property tax revenues to the city's general fund, uh, then, uh, we go and put a bond on, and the chamber will be, be there for the fire department to get that ladder truck, uh, at whatever cost that might be. So you know, we're really concerned, because on the one hand, you're going to take up an item later on this agenda uh, that considers whether or not you'll go forward discussing the housing crisis in Flagstaff. And there's no question that there is. The chamber did a survey, in fact, in January of two thousand and twenty. And we asked the Flagstaff community, three hundred and fifty registered voters, what is the number one challenge issue facing the community of Flagstaff? And by twenty-eight percent, housing affordability at the top. Secondary. Secondary was traffic congestion at fourteen percent. And tied with traffic congestion of fourteen percent was, was jobs in the economy, not even close. Not even close. So just want to be clear that those who vote in favor of this action tonight, you're not for affordable housing. You can't be for both. You can't be for increasing the cost to develop housing and to be for affordable housing. And so we, we don't mind if you admit that this is going to raise costs of housing and then vote for it. We're fine with that. But let's have an honest and frank conversation with the community about this issue. The number-one goal here should be not to make housing more expensive in Flagstaff. And thank you, Your Honor and Counsel, again, for the opportunity to speak on this issue. I'm happy to take questions. Thank you.
Mayor, are you there?
Hello, I'm sorry, I was talking to myself. Mr. Mr. Gally, please stick around because I, I know that counsel would love to have a conversation with you. I see Ms. McCarthy followed by the Vice Mayor.
So I just want to make clear what the chamber's position is. They don't think that new development should pay its own way. They believe that the existing homeowners and other property owners should subsidize the infrastructure that's needed for new housing. That's exactly what you're saying.
Your Honor and Councilman McCarthy, thank you so much, Councilman McCarthy, for allowing me to address this issue because the last time we had this discussion in September, you made a comment after the end of my comments, and I didn't get a chance to, to clearly identify. And you said that you, being a councilperson and representing the city government, would have to raise everyone else's property taxes in order to pay for new services delivered to new development. And that's not true, Mr. McCarthy, because new homeowners pay new property taxes to the general fund. That's what the chamber is in favor of, the city using to pay for new police radios, to pay for new fire capital costs. It's the new property tax revenue you don't currently get that you will get when Canyon Del Rio is built out, when Timber Sky is built out, literally thousands of new units coming online, new homeowners within the city, new property tax revenues. That's the chamber's position. We're not in favor of what you suggested, but we are clearly in favor of you using the new revenues to the general fund to pay for the wants and needs. And, and again, if you, if you're in favor of the development fees, that's fine, but you can't be in favor of the development fee, and then on the other hand, later this evening, tell us that we have an affordable housing crisis. You know, kudos to Vice Mayor Shimoney, who is trying to exact a couple more affordable units from the development. You just approved the final plat from Rio Homes. But to really keep costs down on housing, the opportunity to do so is to vote down this item tonight.
Here's the problem with your argument, sir. The taxes on the new housing will come, yes, but it will be in the future over the next ten years or so. We need to buy the infrastructure immediately. And because as soon as those houses go in, we will have to have the new fire department building, the new police department building, the new cars, the new radios. So the only way to pay for that is upfront. And the only way to do that is to, like you suggest, do a bond, which basically means the whole city pays for it, not the new development. I don't think there's any point in arguing this anymore, but I think our positions are very clear.
I'm going to go to the Vice Mayor.
Joe Gally, thank you so much for your, your comment and your passion here. You know, I think that this is a tough conversation because it's unfortunate that we are behind in addressing the calls to service that we are needing in our community and have to do this to get ahead. But I think this is a reality that we are in, and we need to get ahead so that we don't put our safety at risk of our community and our newest growth. So, you know, I just wanted to say thank you for your passion and your comments. I do disagree with you. I agree with Councilman McCarthy. I think that this new growth needs to be paid by itself, and if that does raise the cost of housing for that new community, you know, it is what it is, but we, we have, we have an issue at the city addressing our, our, our ability to respond to the call. And I know you respect and appreciate that, and I just, I think that we differ in terms of how we think that that money needs to be brought forward. So I don't know if you have any follow-up, but just wanted to share that with you.
And Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Shimoney, thank you for the thoughts, and it is a contentious issue, and it has been a contentious issue between the Flagstaff Chamber, which has at its, at its top of the list the need to address affordability in Flagstaff when it comes to housing. And I'll be speaking later tonight to the item that's on the agenda later. But we do disagree here respectfully, and thank you for acknowledging my passion because I, I do, I do feel that Councilman McCarthy is incorrect. The minute that someone moves into a home, they're assessed property taxes, and they're paying them to the city. And those, those revenues are generated immediately, and they're new revenues to the city. They don't come ten years down the road. There's not all of a sudden a, a big check that someone writes once they get in the community and access services, and then all of a sudden. And listen, I'm fine. I just would like an acknowledgement, that's all. Like, like, think like you did, Vice Mayor Shimoney, that this does in fact increase the cost of housing. Because when you take this action, housing costs go up. And then we have to work twice or three times as hard in other areas to get them down. You know, later on, the staff report notes that the chamber has a cost-of-living index study that notes that the housing figure in Flagstaff is forty-five percent higher than the, than the national average. That's not correct currently. The most recent third-quarter study that the chamber participated in, COLI, Cost of Living Index for Flagstaff, has housing at one thirty-three point five. So we're thirty-three point five percent high, and that number's down from forty-five percent. And you know what? There's a lot of people, including Councilman McCarthy and the mayor and many on council now, that deserve credit for, for putting new housing stock into the Flagstaff market and have made more homes more accessible. And that is driving the cost down. But we're not out of the woods yet. We're not anywhere near out of the woods, and we're in the middle of a COVID pandemic where our business community is flat on the back. We're not attracting jobs to Northern Arizona right now. We're not the number one. In fact, the Brookings Institution said we were in the top ten in the nation to, to be hit the hardest. You know, there's a time and place for everything. And, and this isn't the time nor the place to be adopting massive fees on new development, regardless of whether or not you see merit in that. We don't see the merit in it. But this is certainly not even the time to be doing it. And, and thank you, and I'll entertain additional questions as, as needed. Thank you.
So before I go to Councilmember Aslan, then I want to come back because I do have a couple of questions myself. I just want to clarify something that was said because I feel it was incorrect. And I'm going to ask legal or the staff member who's in charge of this item to just verify this. You know, the public safety, the adoption of development fees has nothing to do with current service levels. It was stated that we are behind right now, and we have to catch up or something. I want to be clear with everybody who is listening that that is not what development fees are about. In fact, it's against the law for us to take the development fees and use it for current needs. Development fees are for anticipated future needs. So can someone please clarify that? Because that was not part of the discussion that we just heard.
Good evening, Mayor. This is Tiffany Antol, Planning Director for the City of Flagstaff. You are correct. The development fees are not used to expand current levels of service. The development fees are based off of current levels of service. And development fees can continue that same level of service for new growth and development.
Okay, so it has to be used for, for what is new. It cannot, like, we could not take development fees that we would collect now and use it to go buy a new fire truck for right now.
Mayor, that's, it, it, the fees would be used in relation to our infrastructure improvement plan in support of new growth. So if that fire truck was being purchased in support of new growth, then we would use development fees. If it was to replace existing fleet to maintain current levels of service, we would need to use other funding sources.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Mr. Aslan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hi, Joe. Good to hear from you. I, I wish we were speaking in person, enjoying the lively discussion. And I always appreciate the perspective that you bring to the table on behalf of the chamber. Even though in this case, I agree that we're going to have to disagree on our conceptualizations of some of these things. You know, one thing that Councilmember McCarthy said that you took issue with is that new development won't be paying these proper taxes for, for ten years or so. I, I think the point he was making there is that the, the building has to be in the ground, and someone has to be moving into it before we can exact property taxes. And these developments aren't going to go up overnight. They're going to be staged in over time. So I, I just think it's important to reiterate that, that, that statement. I'm sure Councilmember McCarthy could have done that himself. But I, I do have another question for you, Joe, and this kind of plays around with what the mayor just brought up, but I think even if we're sort of mincing words and, and going into the legal definitions of things, I think it's still relevant. You know, the, I think part of what we're recognizing in the City of Flagstaff is that current property taxes, which support the general fund, right, currently aren't doing what's needed to make our current ends meet. And so you can make a full-stop statement there, but my question for you, Joe, is, is, so how, how are you thinking through this? How, how are future incoming property taxes supposed to keep up with what the future needs will be when our current property taxes can't even do that for our present moment?
Yeah, Your Honor and Councilman Aslan, it is good to speak with you, and it's good to be able to answer a few questions on this important item. I'm grateful for the opportunity, and I think it's a very fair question, you know. You, you, you as, as one of the seven fiduciaries are presented a budget, and you, and you walk through the budget process. And I think, you know, I, I try to participate in that budget process as much as possible. Some of those meetings are lengthy and, and remote. That is, maybe at the Aquaplex or the Elks Lodge or something of that nature. And I try to get there pre-COVID. Of course, I imagine future budget current will probably be online like these meetings are, and I do look forward to getting back to face-to-face discussion at council chambers because I think that's a little bit easier maybe to have these tough discussions. But, you know, to your point, you know this, the city doesn't rely solely on property tax revenue, but it relies on sales tax revenues too as well. And we've taken a real hard look at sales tax revenues, and, and from what I know from having Rick Tatter speak at our September Business Advocacy Division meeting before the chamber, and we're grateful that city staff, including Dan Polk and Community Development Director and Tiffany Antol make presentations on items like this. And indeed, in September, Tiffany and Dan were before the chamber's Business Advocacy Division making a presentation on this. We've got a great relationship understanding these items. The city's revenue comes from different areas. It doesn't solely come from property tax revenues. Sales tax revenues fluctuate. I mean, fluctuate based on things like the status of the economy. And we are, in fact, a tourism-driven economy. We've got a good, strong retail sector, and we manage to sustain that. I believe that's from our auto industry, which is been clamoring for vehicles, very low finance rates, and I've done good things with moving autos, which move dollars into the city's coffers. But there's other items too. This was acknowledged at a recent council work session or meeting, that in fact, construction tax revenues, sales tax revenues have been up. And they've been up substantially in the last twelve to eighteen months, and maybe it's a shorter period than that. But that has helped to offset the declines in lodging sales tax revenues and in restaurant and bars, which we know have taken a hit. And so, you know, when we look at the whole picture, we look at the whole pie, property tax revenues pay a portion. And all, our position is simply, when you put these fees in place, you make it more expensive to build, the cost gets passed through to the new home buyer. And in fact, then the developer has to say, well, does it make sense? Does it pencil for me? And the reality is, and some may like this or may not like it on council, but the reality is developers make decisions on whether or not they can make money. They don't go build homes to lose money, just like anybody does anything else in business. Nobody runs out to lose money in a business endeavor and go bankrupt. And, and developers take a lot of risk. And as you heard, additionally, Councilman Aslan, as you heard recently in the joint meeting with the chamber leaders, one of the developers said the cost of lumber and two-by-force has gone through the roof. And so we know there's other factors that impact the cost of housing too as well. It's not just fees that a mayor and council may put on
So, Joe?
new units of construction. And so the answer to your question is, we know that, that the city's revenue streams are diversified. We hope that the sales tax revenues stay strong in all sectors across the board, but in a downed economy, we know that we're susceptible to, to reduce sales tax revenues in other places. And we just want housing to be less expensive. Taking this action tonight, I don't, it's just, you have to ask yourself, really, when you go home tonight, is, did I really do a good thing by the city tonight by making housing more expensive by increasing the sea?
Mr. Gally?
It doesn't matter whether you think the revenue is, is what you need down the road. But there's no question that this action makes homes more expensive. And if you're fine with that, then that's fine. But we're not. We, we contend that that's a bad move for the community. And we ask you not to do it, especially during a national pandemic, a global pandemic, that has brought our economy floated significantly.
Mr. Gally, I don't, I'm, I'm not sure why the need to pay for future public safety improvements needs to be the boogeyman here. As you mentioned, you know, the price of lumber is going up. Why don't we complain about that and instead build our houses out of something else? You know, yes, housing is expensive, and this action, I'm prepared to acknowledge to you, Joe, that this increases the cost of housing a little bit, as does many other things. I think what we're talking about here isn't the fact that housing is more expensive. I think what we're talking about is housing is expensive. This is why we have a housing crisis, because there are all these things that we need to do. This isn't compensatory. I don't think this is voluntary. I think this is something that needs to happen, just in the same way that we need to build our houses with sufficient materials for the job. We need to build into our public safety apparatus a way to pay for the needs that are coming when new houses are coming in. It's the cost of doing business, and we can, we're all very upset with how expensive housing is, and it has real-world implications. We're pricing local residents out of Flagstaff, and that is unfortunate, and we need to find solutions for that. I don't think making public safety development fees the boogeyman of the, of the, of the affordable housing crisis is the right way to go. And also, every night when we end these meetings, when I drive home in the past or when I shut the computer off, I do ask myself that question, Joe. Did I just do something? Did I just help to make Flagstaff a better place? And, you know, I would say ninety-nine point nine percent of the time. The answer to that question in my mind is yes, or at least, God, I hope so. No one's out here to, to make Flagstaff a worse place to live or to undermine the system or the institution of council and the decisions that we have to make in good faith. I just don't think it's, it's, it's helpful to look at the needs that we're going to have as projected by our city staff and to make, having the, the, our responsibility for making sure they're paid for, the boogeyman in this situation. I could get just as angry at the lumber industry. industry. Um, you know, and, and we could have the same argument about our building codes, uh, and how we're gonna get to carbon neutrality in 2030. Um, the same argument can be had every time we come to the table to look at what it costs to appropriately build a house in this town. And we're not gonna cut, um, we, we're not gonna shave on measures to make sure our homes are, uh, you know, can't be blown down by wolf. Um, and that they're, they're warm enough to be in during the winter, and that they stay cool enough in the summer that we're not changing our, our carbon footprint. Um, I, I, I think we're in this, we're in the same position here. This is the cost of building a home in Flagstaff. And we need to acknowledge that. And we need to pay for these things, or else we're gonna get in more trouble in the future. Um, saying that there's ways to, to cut corners and shave costs, uh, and, and, and throwing up public safety development fees, as an example, out of hundreds of different ways that we could collectively, accumulatively lower the cost of housing, isn't, i- it's, it's, it's a red herring. It's a, that, that's, that's not why we're having a conversation about a, a housing crisis and an affordability crisis. We're having that conversation because you're right, it is really difficult, um, to build a home at a, a certain price point. Um, but, uh, that's, that's the reality that we're presented with. I, I don't think turning certain aspects of this into a fall guys, um, so that, you know, developers, uh, can pad their pockets, um, in this whole situation is, is, is helpful or accurate.
So I wanna jump in.
I, I think that's, I, I appreciate your perspective, but I think it's unfair because you put some words in my mouth that I didn't say. Uh, I've not, uh, made public safety fees the boogeyman. And I've not, uh, argued that developers should be able to pad their pockets. Uh, what I've said is, and you acknowledged it, thank you, I've said that, when you take this action, you make homes and multifamily housing more expensive. And, and quite substantially too, $995 to $2,000 per unit, these are not, uh, small fees. And my only contention from the Chamber of Commerce, the leading business association in Northern Arizona, representing more than a thousand businesses, is that we know, and I think we all agree, that affordability in the community is the number one challenge. And we also know new construction generates new property tax revenue. And all we're asking you to do is to prioritize that property tax revenue for your public service needs and not add new fees onto new construction. And if that's a challenge for, for the fiduciaries at the city, then say it. It's a challenge, we're sorry, we must have these fees. But at least you acknowledge, Councilman Aslan, that in fact, indeed, you are making housing more expensive by taking this action tonight. And I do tend to agree with you that 99%, maybe not 99.9, but 99% of the time, I think the mayor and council have done a great job of positioning the community to move us forward. This is not, this simply makes housing more expensive and it's not necessary.
My last comment is that I don't think I'm making housing more expensive, Joe. I think I'm accurately representing the fact that housing is expensive.
So I wanna jump in with some of my comments. You know, I was not going to speak, but, um, in listening to the conversation, I just think I need to make sure that people understand what I'm thinking about this. You know, first of all, I wanna start off by saying that just this past weekend, city staff in Akona hosted a business. I believe that there was members of the Flagstaff City Council there who is very interested in moving and locating themselves here in the City of Flagstaff. And these jobs that they're talking about are not retail jobs, um, but these are high-paying jobs. And so I wanna make sure that anyone who's listening to this conversation understands and knows that there are businesses that are very interested in coming to Flagstaff. So, you know, uh, Mr. Gali, I have some very pointed questions for you. Because, um, the, the conversation, or at least the way I understand it, I don't wanna put words in, in your mouth, is that, um, by council looking at or determining that we need to raise the impact fees on public safety, on new houses that are built, um, then we are, we do not care, or we do not understand, or maybe you can help clarify, um, but you, we can't say that we are for affordable housing by doing this action. Is this simple yes or no? Because I just need to make sure I understood you correctly.
Yeah, that's right, Your Honor. I don't think you can, in this case, have your cake and eat it too. I don't think you can raise fees on new construction and then turn around and tell everybody you're making housing less expensive, or you're, you're, you're in favor of making housing less expensive.
Okay, so with that, I really wanna ask you some very pointed questions, Mr. Gali. Um, because you had stated earlier in your comments that you all would definitely support a bond. That is exactly what you said. You're like, hey, you know what? You guys should have a bond if you wanna pay for certain things, and we would support that. So I wanna, I wanna make sure that I understand what you said. Because it's my understanding that we went out as a community for an affordable housing bond, I believe, two years ago. And I think that the chamber actually championed against that. Is that a yes or no?
Uh, Your Honor-
Do you support that bond, yes or no?
-the position on the affordable housing bond, uh, but
That's a no.
To your point about being on, on the record, when the City of Flagstaff mayor and council are ready to put a public safety bond on, on the ballot, we will be there 100% in favor.
Oh, okay. So if we put something on a bond that has to do with public safety. So when the City of Flagstaff, last year, the year before, and the year before that, said that we wanted to take the property tax levy, that 2% cost of living, and use that for public safety, to pay our public safety officers, and to use that to assist them, you guys were also a no on that. Is that correct?
Uh, I don't believe that's accurate, Your Honor. Could you restate the exact, uh, was it a bond? Or was it a-
It wasn't a bond. It had to do with the property taxes. It had to do with the property taxes. And it was the 2% cost of living adjustment with the tax levy. And very specifically, we were using that money to address public safety issues here in the community. And the chamber was not in support of that. So what I'm trying to say is, so far, the chamber-
2020?
This was last year, this was the year before, and this was a year before that. So far, the chamber has not been supportive, supportive of the idea that you're putting out there. So I wanna make sure we're all clear about that. The chamber has not been supportive of that.
We're not supportive of the property tax increases, the 7%, the 7% of the 2%. We were not, I, I don't, I wasn't here for the first two. So I, I, I was on my sabbatical and, uh, but I, I just generally speaking, uh, you know, we have real hesitation with, I think, I, I've been very clear, at least during my tenure at the chamber, uh, the numerous fee increases that this mayor and council have considered, uh, and previous mayors and councils have considered, and property tax hikes, uh, we've all cautioned, uh, place additional burdens on the ability to do business in town. And we're the business association. So we like it when there's less taxes, less fees, and less regulations. That's our general position.
Okay, so to clarify, that is not something you would be interested in. Okay, so I wanna keep moving down this list. Okay, because you're telling us we should fund things this way, but you are acknowledging that that's not actually something that you and your organization are actually interested in. So now I wanna go ahead and move forward to-
Let me correct you, please. Thank you, Your Honor. I'm in, I'm 100% for you using new property tax revenues generated by new development for your public safety needs. And what I'm not getting from yourself, or from staff, or from Councilman McCarthy, or Councilman Aslan, is that there's an acknowledgement that new property revenues come into the general fund with new development, and then indeed, they can be used to buy new radios for police and new fire equipment as needed. But the idea of putting new fees on new construction is not necessary. I get that you wanna do it, but it's not necessary.
The idea when we had this conversation last time, and I'm going to go down this list I have, is that, you know, you're right, we could use the new property tax to pay for police and fire. But there's also the, the roads that we need to have, the maintenance of those things. There's also, for example, the parks that we need to have. There's all the other public, there's all the other impact fees that we as a community do not assess new development. And so a lot of the times, the monies that you're talking about right now are used to address those other things that we did not address before the development got here. But let's talk about the cost of living and the cost of housing here in Flagstaff. Because I'm very interested in understanding that, right? Especially because you said that if we as council make this, they make this move, we don't support affordable housing. Now, I wanna really talk about affordable housing. First and foremost, the chamber did not, did not support the bond. Has the, what has the chamber done with regards to supporting things like, for example, asking for, um, asking for restrictions on short-term rentals, which negatively impact housing here in town? Uh, we know that you have not supported a bond that we've brought forward. What exactly has the chamber done to address the actual cost of housing? And let me give you an example, because I wanna see what the chamber would have done in this example. When I bought my house in Sunnyside, I paid $70,000, $72,000 for that house. Okay? It's an old house built in 1941. That house is now valued at $250,000. Now, the City of Flagstaff didn't put in a development fee on that. Okay? There's been nothing really done to that particular house. Um, and so that was driven by the market. So I would like to hear, I'd like to better understand what the chamber has done to address the market.
Yeah, it's a great question, Your Honor. And the answer is simple. Uh, we have been at the podium on numerous occasions over the last years in favor of, uh, and asking you, when there's been rezones, whether it's for Juniper Point, Canyon Del Rio, Timber Sky, I've been involved with Juniper Point for 20 years personally. I've been involved in that project for, for just about two decades, trying to get, uh, and assist private individuals who needed financing, uh, to, now there's new owners of that property, and I've not been involved with, with those people. But the chamber has been the loudest proponent for bringing more housing stock to Flagstaff. And if you listen to Councilman McCarthy, he's, uh, consistently in recent years, sounded that message. But the answer to affordability in Flagstaff is simply getting developers to come and build more units. And that's the, been the chamber's position, and we've been very active behind that. We're not builders. The chamber is not a builder. We're not a developer. We have many developers who are members of the chamber, because they know the chamber carries a positive message for affordability. And, and the development community, Your Honor, is the answer to the affordability question. But when government takes a position that makes it more expensive to build, which is what this item is tonight, and it's during a dou- a massive downturn in the economy. Look, in 2008, Flagstaff was the number one community in the United States on the cover of the National Home Builders Association magazine for loss of construction jobs by percentage, 41% loss of construction jobs in a community, number one in the country. That's not a, that's not a, a bucket we wanna be in. It's not a number one we wanna be. We wanna be the opposite of that. And, and to your point, Your Honor, listen, the affordability issue isn't gonna be solved overnight. You know this. You know that the demand for homes in this community, uh, only continues to skyrocket with the, uh, addition of hundreds of thousands of people moving into Maricopa County, exactly two hours south of us, and with a, uh, consistent temperatures over 100 degrees for 140 or 150 days. Uh, our beautiful climate in Northern Arizona is very attractive. Remember, we, we, listen, you talk to the local Realtors, they'll tell you, 26 to 28% of homes in Flagstaff, something like that, are, are second homeownerships. You can't control that. We can't control that. We are an advocate with you for more housing stock. And you, Your Honor, and that council, the council I'm speaking to, have done an outstanding job in the last three-plus years of getting more housing stock in the pipeline. And we are gonna be better off down the road. We're just very concerned with this particular item, because we think it is not, uh, essential at this point. And it's, you know, it's a bad time to be doing this.
So with that, okay, in wrapping up my comments, I would like to just say, okay, and this is not necessarily a question to you, so you don't need to answer it. But this is a question to council and everybody who's listening. Okay? I have been here since 2008, and we've been having this conversation ongoing about development fees. Um, and I can tell you that, you know, in 2008, right before the bust, there was the idea that the development fees were gonna be about 12, excuse me, $25,000 if we wanted to make sure that we were paying for new parks, if we were trying to make sure that we have public safety, and those types of things. Council at that time decided to only look at public safety, and that the rest of those things would be funded with, um, with, um, with sales tax and things like that. Um, because at that particular time, the chamber and other organizations were like, now's not the right time to do that. Right? Then we went through the downturn. Now's not the right time to do this. Now we are still in the middle, uh, we're headed back toward another downturn, even though housing, um, construction, we see building all over, and it's one of our strongest, um, one of our strongest sectors right now. But this is still not the time to, um, to, to do this and to address some serious structural needs. So I would just say that, you know, I've support, um, affordable housing. It's something that I've been passionate about. You know, we're gonna have a conversation later about affordable housing, and we're gonna talk about council will to do some things that need to be done. And we're gonna talk about our, um, Housing Commission and what they're doing. We're also gonna talk about the fact that we put a bond on, um, on for the, our ballot, uh, two years ago, that did not receive support from some of the people who are saying that they are very concerned about, about, about affordable housing. I think that we are all looking at the affordable housing issue, and we all care about it. But to say, because we are doing something to address something in our budget that is structurally wrong, that we don't care about affordable housing, I think that's incorrect. And I think that's a misstatement. And I wanna make sure that I say that that's incorrect. I'm gonna go ahead and move to, um, our city attorney, then I'm gonna move back to Mr. McCarthy. And if there's no other public comments, we're gonna move on. Um, city attorney?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. No, I just wanted to jump in there. It just seemed like your last question was getting outside of the agendized item and, but we're, we're past it. So if you wanna go to Mr. McCarthy, that's great.
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be very brief. The choice is fees on new development versus taxes or bonds to increase property taxes on existing homes. That's the choice.
Are there any more, um, questions for Mr. Gali?
Thank you, Your Honor, thinking counsel.
Thank you. Um, is there any more public comment for this item?
No, Mayor, there is not.
Okay, with that, I'd like to go ahead and close the public hearing. And I'm going to go to Mr. Odegaard.
Mayor, I don't think you've had the presentation yet.
My bad. It just seems like we should after all that. Okay, I'm gonna go to, uh, staff.
So you wanna reopen that hearing?
Let me go ahead and reopen that hearing. Sorry, Goody. I apologize. We've seen this numerous times. So I think that was part of it. So.
And I, I, I abbreviated it. It all this, uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Tiffany Antol, Planning Director. Um, just a really short presentation. Can you see the title screen right now?
We can.
Okay, great. So again, this is just a, again, every five years, we look at development fees. Latest were adopted in 2014. Um, we looked at the Land Use Assumptions and Infrastructure Improvement Plan. That was approved back in April 7th. So today, um, we're looking at adopting the development fee study and having the first read of the ordinance, um, the proposed fire fees, uh, the proposed police, and then I'll just get to the last slide, which are the proposed combined fees, the current, um, on the left, you'll see the current fees, and on the right, you'll see the proposed fees. Um, if you have any questions, I'm here to try to answer them. We also, um, have the consultant on the line.
Counsel, are there any questions about the presentation? I don't see any questions. So I'm gonna say thank you to, um, let's see. City attorney?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just have a quick question for Tiffany. Tiffany, on the agenda, it, it says to adopt the development fee study and then also read the ordinance. Is that gonna be two separate motions?
Yes.
Mayor, this is Stacy Salzberg. Yes, it does need to be two separate motions.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that before the motions start going ahead. Thanks.
So Ms. Antol, thank you very much, um, for your presentation. I don't see any questions for you. So I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at this time and turn it inward. I'm going to go to, uh, Mr. Odegaard first.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I moved to adopt the development fee study.
Counsel, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
So I heard the vice mayor. So I'm gonna go with, um, Councilmember Odegaard has made a motion to adopt the development fee study. And, um, the vice mayor has seconded that. Is there any further discussion?
It was me.
I'm sorry, my bad. It was Mr. Aslan has seconded that. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Vice mayor, did you have a comment?
I did, I just wanted to say, you know, just hearing the conversation earlier that, yes, we have an affordable housing crisis that we need to address, but underlining that, we also have basic public services that we need to provide. And I see this to be a solution to address, um, how to address those, those services. And, and you know, our, the, the speaker talked about COVID and doing this during COVID. And again, you know, we've seen this growth in our community and the construction only on the up and up. And it's been like, like we talked about, kind of carrying us in a way through this. So, like, like as councilmember said, you know, it's like, how do we want to pay for it? As you mentioned, you know, what are, what are the options? And this just makes the most sense to do it this way. And, and again, yes, we need to address affordable housing, but market, but the market is dictating the price in our community of our housing. And, and we also need to be building developments that aren't geared and targeting certain popu, we need to build workforce housing. And, and so, the issue is complicated, and I just wanted to share that, thank you.
So is there a motion to read ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-five by title only for the first time?
So moved.
So I heard Mr. McCarthy and Mr. Aslan, is that correct?
I'll second that.
Okay, so Mr. McCarthy has made a motion to read ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-five by title only for the first time, Mr. Aslan has provided the second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Madam Mayor, I have a comment.
Okay, we'll back up, Ms., Ms. Solis?
Yeah, uh, um, well, I'm grateful for this extensive and excessive discussion, um, um, I do appreciate all of the work and efforts that has been put into the adopt, into the Development Fee Study, uh, with the staff effort and the consultants. However, I'm very much cognizant of the fact that, that the construction sector has pretty much, uh, underwritten our general fund, providing increased revenues in this time of global pandemic. Therefore, I would, I would propose adopting the fee study and delaying the effectiveness date of the ordinance until after we're through this pandemic.
So there was a motion made by?
Basically, I'm sorry, Mayor, uh, let me just finish my sentence. Basically, I'm proposing a moratorium on any new fees and increased fees until after the global pandemic.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to say that there was a motion, and there was a second, right? There's a motion made by Ms. McCarthy, there was a second by Mr. Aslan. Okay, so I, what I hear you doing is proposing an amendment to that, is that what you're doing?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay.
Proposing, uh, a later effectiveness date once our Flagstaff and, um, Northern Arizona regional economy is, is back in its feet and over this global pandemic called COVID. Thank you.
Is there a second to Mrs. Solis's amendment?
Um, this is Charlie, I'll provide a second on that.
Okay, so there, there was a second by Ms. Solis, and her amend, uh, there was a amendment by Ms. Solis to adopt, to read ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-five, but to delay the start until after the global pandemic is over, is that correct, Ms. Solis?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
There was a second provided to, um, that amendment, um, by Mr. Odegaard. Is there any further comments on this? This is this amendment to the underlying motion, Ms. Solis's amendment, is there any other comments? Uh, vice mayor?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Solis, for the idea. I, I, I'm going to be voting no on this, just because I think we just need to get this in place, and we're playing catch-up. And, and I'm just glad to see us moving forward with this. And again, with housing being driven by the market, um, I, I feel comfortable with us moving forward with this. And, and I do appreciate where, where you're coming from, Ms. Solis.
Any other comments? Okay, uh, we're voting on the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so the amendment fails. We're going to go back to the underlying motion. The underlying motion was made by Ms. McCarthy, was seconded by Mr. Aslan, and that was to read ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-five by title only for the first time. Are there any other comments on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
I'm a resounding nay. Solis.
Okay, that motion carries.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, amending the Flagstaff City Code Title III Business Regulations, Chapter Three Dash Eleven Development Fees, to assess development fees on new development, providing for severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Okay, just a reminder to everybody who is listening, um, that it would be the Flagstaff City Council's intention at the November third, twenty twenty council meeting, to read ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-five by title only for the final time. Okay. With that, we're going to take a break, and we're going to come back, um, in ten minutes. So we would be at, uh, let's come back at four, forty-five, and we'll continue on with our agenda, we'll be at our regular agenda, which is item number eleven. Thank you.
Hi, Mayor, yes, we are back live and streaming.
Thank you so much. So we're down to item number eleven of our agenda. Um, eleven A is consideration and adoption of Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Dash Fifty-seven. This is approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Flagstaff and Northern Arizona University for Applied Natural Resources Research. Staffs recommend actions that we read Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Dash Fifty-seven by title only, and then adopt. Is there a presentation for this item?
Uh, Mayor and Council, this is Ed Schenk, uh, with the Stormwater Section. Uh, there is not a presentation for this item. I am available for questions, or if you want overview of the IGA, I'm also available for that.
Counsel? Okay, if there's no comments or questions, is there a, um, motion?
This is Jim McCarthy. I move that we read Resolution Twenty Twenty Dash Five Seven by title only.
Is there a second? Counsel, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made by Ms. McCarthy and a second by the vice mayor to read Resolution Number Two Thousand and Twenty Dash Fifty-seven by title only. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries, thank you.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Flagstaff and the Arizona Board of Regents for and on behalf of Northern Arizona University for Applied Natural Research, excuse me, Applied Natural Resources Research.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Dash Fifty-seven?
This is Charlie, I move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second, McCarthy.
There's been a motion made by, um, Mr. Odegaard and a second by Mr. McCarthy to adopt Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Dash Fifty-seven. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. We're now down to item number eleven B. This is a consideration and adoption of ordinance number Twenty Twenty Dash Twenty-Six. This is an ordinance amending Title XI, General Plans and Subdivisions, Division Eleven Dash Ten Dot Thirty, specific plans to provide clarification regarding the process for adopting and amending specific plans. Staffs recommend action at this meeting is that we read ordinance number Twenty Twenty Dash Twenty-Six by title only for the first time.
Hi, Mayor, this is Kevin Fensel, Deputy City Attorney. I'm going to walk through this item, so I think I have up on the screen the amendments that are being proposed tonight, can you all see those?
Yes.
Okay. So these are the proposed, this is a proposed ordinance that will amend Title XI, Division Eleven Dash Ten Dot Thirty of the City Code regarding specific plans. The purpose of these amendments is to provide clarification regarding the public hearing notice and approval requirements when adopting or amending specific plans. Um, Title XI of the City, of the City Code provides the procedures and standards for adoption, amendment, and readoption of the city's general plan and specific plans in accordance with ARS nine dash four six one point zero one. The proposed amendments just provide, like I said before, some additional detail and clarification regarding the process for the adopting and amending of specific plans. The proposed amendments do not change the current process used for adopting or amending specific plans. They merely provide the greater detail by spelling out the public hearing notice and approval requirements. That's what's being proposed, and I'm here to answer any questions if council has any questions about this item.
Mr. Odegaard?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Fensel. Uh, I appreciate when I first saw this agenda item, it seemed very confusing to me. But, uh, with your follow-up emails, that really this, uh, provides clarity and to go forward. So I really appreciate that, so thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions or comments for our attorney? Okay, thank you, Mr. Fensel. Is there a motion?
I'll provide that motion, Mayor, um, is to read ordinance number two zero two zero dash two six by title only for the first time.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Odegaard and a second by the vice mayor to read ordinance number Twenty Twenty Dash Twenty-Six by title only for the first time. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, amending City Code Title XI, General Plans and Subdivisions, Division Eleven Dash Ten Point Three Zero, specific plans to provide additional detail and clarification regarding the process for adopting and amending specific plans, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. Just as a reminder to everybody who is at the meeting and who is listening, it would be the Flagstaff City Council's intention at the November third, two thousand twenty council meeting to read ordinance number Twenty Twenty Dash Twenty-Six by title only for the final time, and then to adopt ordinance, ordinance number Twenty Twenty Dash Twenty-Six. We're now down to eleven C, this is consideration and adoption of ordinance number Twenty Twenty Dash Twenty-Six. This is an ordinance of the Flagstaff City Council of the City of Flagstaff, amending the Flagstaff City Code Title III Business Regulations by adopting a new chapter, Three Dash Twelve Short-Term Rentals, providing for penalties, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, and establishing an effective date. Staffs recommend action at tonight's meeting is that we read ordinance number Twenty Twenty Dash Twenty-Six by title only for the first time. Mr. Fitchett?
Thank you, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name is Jack Fitchett, and I'm a management analyst to the CMO. And tonight I have a very brief presentation for you outlining the proposed short-term rental ordinance. Can you all hear me okay and see that title screen for the presentation?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so for background, here are several key points related to the current STR climate. In twenty sixteen, the Arizona Legislature preempted municipalities from taking action that would prohibit short-term rentals. Then in twenty nineteen, the Arizona Legislature gave municipalities some flexibility in how they could regulate these properties. And then, as you likely remember, Council, you all recently approved a contract with Lodging Rev for software that will help the city monitor and enforce rules and regulations related to short-term rentals. And additionally, Lodging Rev, this, uh, this vendor that we contracted with, currently estimates that we have, uh, between thirteen hundred and seventeen hundred unique listings within the Flagstaff City limits. So what are the provisions within this ordinance? Well, as previously mentioned, the state has greatly restricted municipalities from regulating short-term rentals. However, the recent legislation in twenty nineteen provided some rules and regulations for these properties. And this new ordinance is really outlining what the state has given the city the, the ability to do at this current point in time. Uh, the first provision within this ordinance is that all short-term rentals must acquire a transaction-privileged tax license in order to operate. The second main provision is that all short-term rental owners will register with the city with all required information as outlined within this ordinance. That required information is really the owner's emergency contact information, so that they can be reached if there's a complaint or in an emergency. The third provision is that no short-term rental shall advertise their property in any way that will violate City Code. And further expanding on this is Provision Four, which will require a short-term rental property to post a notice on, on that site. In relation to, uh, the third provision regarding advertisements, the mandatory notice that must be posted on the short-term rental premise is written in the ordinance, and just bear with me here, I'm going to read what's currently in the ordinance. It is unlawful to use this property for any non-residential use, special events that require a permit or license, retail business, restaurant, event center, banquet hall, or other uses prohibited by Arizona revised statutes. So what these provisions are also addressing is something that our code compliance staff frequently sees, which are short-term rentals advertising their property to accommodate fifteen to twenty guests or even more. International building codes restrict occupancy to be ten or fewer in a residential property unless specific criteria have been met, such as fire sprinklers or outlined ADA features. So in other words, a property cannot advertise on a site like Airbnb that they can accommodate fifteen guests unless their property meets those specific code requirements. And lastly, this ordinance also outlines key definitions and civil penalties, civil penalties, which begin at five hundred dollars. Uh, so if council were to move forward with tonight's draft ordinance, staff will then begin to work on education and outreach to ensure that current short-term rental owners and our community are aware of these provisions. Some of those method, methods are listed on this slide. And additionally, the Lodging Rev software will be up and running within the next six to eight weeks, which will allow for, the easy, which will allow for easy registration and access to this information for all short-term rental operators. And if council were to approve this draft, draft ordinance during the second read on November third, two thousand twenty, this ordinance would go into effect on January first, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, lastly, I just wanted to make council aware that this ordinance was a really great team effort working with Community Development Management Services and our legal staff. And so with that, that concludes my presentation, Council, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, thank you.
Counsel, are there any questions for Mr. Fitchett? Um, Ms. Whelan?
I do, Mayor, I, I'm wondering, is there a possibility that once, um, these fines are used to pay for our contractual agreement with the company? Could we then earmark the excess money to go to our, uh, affordable housing or to our housing, uh, programs for affordable housing? And is this the time to do that?
I thank you for the question, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Whelan. I believe Rick Tatters is online, and I think he could better address that question than I can currently. Rick, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. Um, generally, we do not restrict these types of revenues for a specific purpose. Uh, in an ordinance such as something like this, is really the budget process that determines the allocation of revenues uh, by council on an annual basis, and that's what we would rely on. Uh, we could take direction, uh, from council to. We could take direction from council to fund certain things and to use potentially certain revenues. But the budget process is really the place for that type of allocation.
Thank you, Rick. I really appreciate that. And counsel, I would hope that as you begin your budget process that these are things that you will keep in mind when we're looking at our housing crisis. So I would love some support with giving direction that that's what we do during budget time. Thank you.
Okay, I see the Vice Mayor followed by Mr. Tatter, followed by Ms. Solis.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember Whelan. Thank you so much for those thoughts and idea. I fully agree with you and would like to see us earmark those funds to go back towards the community and the population that we're looking to serve. Kind of going in theme with the conversation tonight. Jack, my only question. First of all, thank you for your work on this. Very exciting to see this progress. Can you just remind me of the fee schedule?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. So the current, the current first offense as stated would be $500. And then actually, within the ordinance, it doesn't list it out. I can pull it up from there. We don't have a set fee schedule for subsequent offenses. It just says that it will increase.
Okay, so my question is, you know, I'd like, I would advocate that the first warning is a warning and doesn't have a fee to it. And I know, I know we're typically fairly, you know, good about that at the city, but maybe that could be part of that ordinance if there's counsel support for that. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, Vice Mayor. Just to add on, I believe Mr. Eccleston is online as well and he may be able to speak a little bit more directly to how they handle these initial violations. Reggie, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, Jack. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Counsel. Reggie Eccleston, Code Compliance Manager. Our typical process when we have violations is to, you know, send a, give a warning initially. And usually when we do that, we absolutely do get compliance. Our goal is voluntary compliance. And even with this ordinance written, it, you know, we are not looking to actually fine a bunch of people. We're just trying to make them understand that this occupancy was the main concern for us when it comes to health and safety. And so the ordinance, the way it's written now, again, says $500. But in reality, it won't happen until there's a violation that's adjudicated by the court. And so we basically, once we're involved, I'm very confident that most of these properties, if they happen to be in violation from our standards, will come into compliance. So if we had to go back to three occasions in the same violation, that would be forwarded to the court. And if the court decided they were in violation, then it would be reported to the state and that's when the fines would kick in as well.
Thank you for that.
I'm going to go to the city manager first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, counsel, for this discussion. I would echo the comments made thus far that within the framework of the ordinance, it might be advisable to counsel not to get overly prescriptive about, one, how the, whatever revenues are realized from imposition of fines, how those revenues are spent. I agree with Mr. Tatter that that is properly put before you in the budget process and counsel has the final say in the budget process. So that could indeed be effectuated. It would just be effectuated through a different method rather than having it prescribed in this ordinance. I would share a similar comment with respect to warnings versus fines versus increased fines. And respectfully ask that counsel give a little deference to our code compliance team. They do exercise very good and justify discretion as they are going through these processes. Obviously, with the new ordinance and new, not regulations that will be in place for the first time, there will be a learning curve. And I know that code compliance will be pursuing this with, certainly with cognizance of that it is going to be new for a lot of people. And its implementation of this will take a little bit of time and a lot of coaching and education and outreach. So I do give deference to code compliance and others for implementing these in a very professional way that works with people. And then conversely, you know, there may be instances with very egregious violations where it's quite justified to take a little bit more of a heavy-handed approach. And I would have a similar comment there. So thanks for those discussions and those are just my comments and follow-up to that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We're going to go to Ms. Solis, followed by Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Please educate me. If a supposed short-term rental or a vacation rental by owner in this, in this proposed ordinance, you know, will have to, to have a TPT and pay for TPT, will it also have to pay the BBB tax? That's my first question. Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer that for you, Councilmember Solis. Yes, when they are collecting and charging a sales tax, it is at the BBB rate, same as hotels, motels and short-term rentals.
Thank you, Mr. Tatter. I have a question for Mr. Fitchett. I am just curious on the level of outreach or vetting that has gone so far. Has this been vetted with the, our CVB team internally? And also externally, has this been vetted to people, my residents who operate VRBOs as well as other related businesses?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Solis. I think that your first question was addressing whether or not the CVB has been involved in this. And yes, trace, Mr. Ward was a team member on the selection team for LodgingRev and has been involved in these discussions with the ordinance as well. As far as vetting with other short-term rental owners within the community, we were focused more on this education and outreach component that would take place if you all decided that this ordinance should go into effect. Since this is really what, the bare minimum of what we can do because of what the state has allowed, this is really just outlining and bringing the city in line where the state has allowed us to be at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Fitchett, and thank you for your stellar work on this ordinance, you know, which is, which pretty much reiterates the state restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'm referring back to the good conversation we had from code compliance and the city manager about, you know, we're not going to hit people over the head with a big hammer the first time they make a mistake. We're going to focus on trying to get them into compliance and etc. So my question is, before we do the final read on this in a couple of weeks, I would suggest that the legal staff take a look at the wording and see if the wording allows that type of discretion. The way I read it, it says thou shall, you know, pay $500 the first time. But if legal could go back and, you know, comment about that or change the wording if appropriate, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Mayor, counsel, this is Sterling, Councilmember McCarthy. We're happy to do that.
So Sterling, you made the scene.
I did. Thank you.
So the only thing I want to just add to the conversation is that I want to make sure that counsel and the public is mindful of the fact that these changes do not address the underlying issues of hotels and neighborhoods. And while individuals can't advertise that they have a party house and that house fits 15 people, there are ways to circumvent that. You can advertise that you have a four-bedroom, super spacious house that has a, you know, a great room or a huge living room or something like that. So I just want to make sure that the individuals who are concerned about the quality of living in their neighborhoods and whether or not they, whether or not a boutique hotel is something that would be allowed, this doesn't address that. Ms. Palmer?
So our actual building codes do address the amount of maximum occupant loads, which is more than 10. So they would have to actually do a change or use and change of occupancy if they would like to have more than 10 people at that particular unit. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. And if it is considered a single-family dwelling, it is 10 or less.
And so I guess what I'm trying to say is, is that while we know that is part of our code, right? If they have a house that they're advertising that is four bedrooms and has a great room, they don't have to say anything about the maximum occupancy unless we're requiring them to say that the maximum occupancy in their unit, and maybe that's something that we want to see if we can legally do, is 10 people. That also does not prohibit people from bringing more than those 10 people. So I just want to make sure that we're aware of that. And if you live next door to a house like this, then it would be on the person who lives next door to have to count the people coming in and out. It does not prohibit them from setting up a boutique hotel in their neighborhood and utilizing as such. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And if they do find that there are more than 10, then they need to be calling the police department to be able to file that report. And in the event that there is more, then that's where my building inspectors would create an enforcement case to be able to follow up on that.
And does the case go with the owner of the property or does it go to the people that are there?
Owner of the property.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. McCarthy?
I had a question. Would a bed and breakfast facility fall under the ordinance? Or are there separate B&amp;B rules covered elsewhere in the code?
I thank you, Councilmember McCarthy, and I'm just pulling up the ordinance right now. And I believe bed and breakfast is in there. You'll see under definitions, and bear with me, I'll just read it to you. Including any hotel, motel, inn, tourist home or, or house, dude ranch, resort, campground, studio, bachelor hotel, lodging, house, rooming house, residential home, apartment house, dormitory, public or private club, mobile home or house trailer at a fixed location and at location in the state or other similar structures, spaces such as a dwelling unit in a multiple family development. So it does not specifically call out bed and breakfast in that. But it does make mention to any such dwelling unit that is a multiple family development.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Antall?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember McCarthy. I just wanted to let you know that there are requirements for bed and breakfast listed in the zoning code. And there are very specific requirements, occupancy, number of folks. It's limited to two bedrooms. So if that's something you'd like me to share with you in the future, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, I appreciate the answer. Thank you.
So counsel, are there any more comments or questions? Is there a motion?
Mayor, this is Jim McCarthy. I moved to read ordinance 2020-27 by title only for the first time.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made by Mr. McCarthy and a second by the Vice Mayor to read ordinance number 2020-27 by title only for the first time. Is there any further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Flagstaff, amending the Flagstaff city code Title III Business Regulations by adopting a new chapter 3-12 Short Term Rentals, providing for penalties, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability and establishing an effective date.
Just as a reminder to everybody who's at the meeting and everybody who's listening, it would be the Flagstaff City Council's intention to read ordinance number 2020-27 by title only for the final time at our November 3, 2020 council meeting and then to adopt ordinance number 2020-27. With that, we're now down to item number 12. Item number 12 is a discussion item. 12A is the Flagstaff Police Presentation on Public Safety Commissions. Before we begin this presentation, I'd like to ask our city attorney if you could please remind counsel as to our authority and to our charter?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and counsel and for the benefit of the public, the term review board is one that is thrown around a lot. And that said, I want to make sure everyone is clear that under our city charter, boards and commissions are recommendation commissions only to the city council. The term review board in a police capacity, the charter does not authorize the city council to set up a citizen review board that would handle disciplinary matters of police officers. It's a council manager form of government and it's the city manager that handles disciplinary matters. Therefore, such a review board is not authorized under the city charter. I just want to make sure that is clear for everyone as a precursor to the discussion tonight because I think that may be something that many people are interested in having answers on.
Before you turn off your mic, city attorney, can you just also remind people as to what the city charter is?
Absolutely. The city charter is essentially the city of Flagstaff's constitution. That is the basic governing document upon which the city of Flagstaff operates. It is approved by the voters of the city of Flagstaff and it's, can be amended obviously by the voters of the city of Flagstaff, and it is from time to time. That said, it is essentially, like I mentioned, the constitution of the city of Flagstaff.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. City Attorney.
You're welcome.
So we're going to go now, we're going to have the presentation by the Flagstaff Police Department on Public Safety Commissions. I believe the presentation will be done by Chief Musselman, is that correct? Or no, it's Mary Ann Sullivan. So our city attorney, Ms. Sullivan?
Madam Mayor, actually, Deputy interim Chief Musselman will be doing most of the presentation. I'll just be assisting and available to answer any questions that may come up as well.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name's Dan Musselman and I currently serve as your interim police chief. Tonight, we have roughly 17 slides to go through for this discussion. So for tonight's discussion, we want to talk specifically about civilian review boards, give some definitions, talk about those initiated by local government, those initiated by consent decrees and different types of review boards. And then we'll get into public safety commissions. And then a little bit of chatter about the citizens liaison committee. And for tonight's discussion, our focus is on the public safety commissions. However, the terms oversight board, public safety commissions, review boards, those are all used interchangeably by different political bodies. So that's why we wanted to touch on them all so we can kind of explain the differences between the two concepts. You know, understanding that counsel is more interested in the public safety advisory committee model. So a citizen review board can best be defined as a body of citizens dedicated to reviewing and improving police officer conduct. These agencies are implement, an implementation of citizen oversight. This form of police accountability often gives the broader non-police community a medium to voice concerns and provide criticisms of law enforcement operations. And then a consent decree is if there's substantial evidence of systematic abuse within a department or a community, the Department of Justice then can begin the process of negotiating an agreement with the police department, city officials and those communities directly impacted by the abuse. Once the agreement is solidified, it then goes before a federal judge for approval and a federal monitor is assigned to oversee the reform. and a federal monitor is assigned to oversee the reform process. Sometimes, but not always, a citizen oversight board is required by the consent decrees. So some agencies utilize civilian oversight boards because they are under consent decree from the Department of Justice. Other jurisdictions have decided to put an oversight board in place on their own. And some of these would be like Berkeley, California, San Francisco, Minneapolis, Minnesota, Flint, Michigan, and Tucson, Arizona. Most oversight procedures have come into existence after a high profile case of alleged police misconduct, usually a shooting or other physical force incident. Racial and ethnic allegations of discrimination and findings of discriminatory practices through an official investigation are often what lead to a request for citizen oversight. And so I put these on the slide just to show you, these are some of the agencies under consent decrees. And then we can go to the next slide. And so we, I broke it down for simplicity into four types of civilian citizen review boards. In this first one, type one, the citizens actually investigate the allegations of misconduct by officers and then make recommendations to the police chief. And these recommendations can be made on the finding of the complaint, whether it's founded, unfounded, exonerated, or they can be recommendations made on the discipline imposed. Should the officer get a reprimand? Should they be fired, et cetera? Or recommendations can be on police policies. And these are quite costly because it requires hiring investigators. And so citizens, and then they also hold these in a public forum usually. And so that can get quite costly. Some are authorized to hire independent counsel. And sometimes a member to the police department is a liaison to the board to explain policies and procedures. And then they arrive at their decisions based on a preponderance of the evidence. And the citizen review board policy can determine what types of complaints the review board is allowed to hear or wishes to hear. Usually they center around excessive force, rudeness, racial profiling, those types of things. The second type of citizen review board type two is the police agencies actually investigate the complaint and develop the findings. And then citizens review and recommend that the chief either accept or reject the findings. These are typically less expensive than the type one, can be staffed by volunteers. But again, the hearings are open to the public. Many have subpoena power to compel people to testify and some don't. It just depends on how they're set up. The civilian review board type three, an auditor actually comes in and investigates the process by which the police department investigated the complaint and reports on the thoroughness. Did the police do a good job? Did they do a bad job? Is there more questions they need to go back? Oh, sorry. I missed. I jumped ahead. Got lost in my slides. So citizen review board type three, the police investigate it and report the findings. But then citizens can appeal those findings to a depart to a group of citizens. And then those citizens review them and make their own findings and their own recommendations to the chief. This could be inexpensive if the review board is made up of volunteers. And then I put Portland, Oregon, they use this model and their average cost per complaint is three hundred and sixty one dollars. And then on to type four. And this is where an auditor comes in, investigates the process by which the police department looked at the complaint and reports on the thoroughness of the complaint. This still has some expense to it because you're hiring a professional auditor. Again, some do, some of these boards do have subpoena power and some do not. This can be best be described as more of a private investigation by the auditor, which is not open to the public, but sometimes the findings are. So then just a little bit about what people report being the pros of having civilian review boards. Complaintants report feeling validated when the oversight board agrees with their allegations or when they have an opportunity to be heard. They're satisfied of being able to express their concerns in person to the officer and they feel they have contributed to holding the department accountable for the officer's behavior. Some police administrators administrators report improved relationships with their communities, improved quality of internal and complaint investigations. And they've stated that review boards can make valuable policy recommendations. Some of the cons of a review board, some feel it is unnecessary. They feel existing internal staff already conduct good investigation and hold officers accountable for misconduct. A few actually go to lawsuits. They are costly depending on the type of board. Cost per investigation ranges from three hundred and sixty one dollars to up to forty eight hundred per complaint. They can be embarrassing to the officer if the if it's held in public and the officer is judged in public. This could hurt future recruitment for police departments where officers already feel they're under a microscope. There's some risk of civilian review boards overturning a chief's termination of a police officer who was fired for misconduct. And so they feel it could undermine the chief's authority. Reports suggest that civilians, non-police folks are consistently more lenient on police than police administrators are. And this may have a negative effect of keeping bad cops on the police force. And so a little bit about public safety commissions, and I was able to find three commissions just to discuss here for you. Our city charter does authorize the city to create commissions and to grant them with powers consistent with the charter. Commission members are appointed and serve solely at the discretion of city council. And they're given specific guidelines surrounding their purpose and authority. Okay, next slide, please. So the Austin Public Safety Commission is this is an advisory body to the city council on all budgetary and policy matters concerning public safety. And this includes matters related to the Austin Police Department, the Austin Fire Department, and the Emergency Medical Services Department. They make recommendations on matters related to long term comprehensive comprehensive or strategic planning, access to an expenditure of state and federal grants, and other public safety matters. The next one I found was the Town of Castle Rock. And the purpose of their public safety commission is to advise the town council on recommendations concerning levels of service, local public safety issues, and funding for the fire and rescue and police departments. And then the last one I'll discuss is the Malibu Public Safety Commission. They're established to make recommendations to council with respect to matters concerning the city's law enforcement and fire services, emergency medical services, animal control, emergency preparedness, traffic safety, including traffic law enforcement and traffic engineering, and other such matters as directed by their council. This commission also assists with the review of annual operating and capital budgets as well as strategic planning to identify goals and objectives related to staffing, facilities, and the community needs. So what we feel, we feel that the culture here at the Flagstaff Police Department already has established a culture of doing it right. We have an early warning system in place for our officer officers. We have a robust complaint, use of force, and vehicle pursuit investigation policy. We're dedicated to transparency. We make an offer to complainants. If they're not satisfied with the outcome, they can come meet with the chief to review the complaint and related body camera footage of the incident. We have our citizens liaison committee and we have synopsized complaints to them in the past. And they've also brought complaints to our attention that we've looked into and then reported out to them. We prioritize our de-escalation implicit bias and mental health crisis training. And we have many longstanding positive relationship with community stakeholders. And then a little bit more about our liaison committee. This committee was formed in twenty fifteen to improve the communication process between the department and our community. We meet monthly and have organized several public meetings for our community roughly every quarter since twenty fifteen. Some of the topics we've covered include use of force policies, know your rights, what an officer's authority is, gangs and flagstaff, mental health resources, et cetera. Our committee is made up of members who represent some of the typically underrepresented segments in our community. And we encourage community members to provide information about the police department to to committee members without any fear of retribution. And then our committee members act as a forum to address asylum concerns with our police department. And then I've listed our contact information there at the bottom. So in closing, most police agencies, much like ours, have made significant progressive changes over the last few years to build a safer, more just and more transparent future. Some of the things we've embarked on is body camera programs, the early warning intervention program, getting a legal advisor assigned to our police department, contracting with the Lexipol companies for policy administration, updates, and daily training bulletins, using transparency dot com to share our critical incidences, our policies, and body camera footage of critical incidents, providing the training on procedural justice, implicit bias, and de-escalation, and creating our citizens liaison committee. And so again, I'd just like to assure our council that the overwhelming majority of the men and women in police work are here to do good, protect our communities, and serve our citizens. And I thank you for giving me the opportunity to present tonight. With that, I'll do my best to answer any questions and then let you turn it inward for any discussion.
Counsel, are there any questions for our chief? Ms. Triodegar?
Yeah, thank you, Chief Musselman. I totally agree with your just your last statement. The men and women that serve in the department really hold the values of wanting to serve our community to the best of their ability and and have the community in the best interest. And so thank you for that last comment because I totally agree with that. And then I thank you for the presentation. These last three presentations have been very thoughtful and well done. So I appreciate it. So thank you.
Vice Mayor, followed by Ms. Solis?
Hey, Chief Musselman, thank you so much for the presentation. Really enjoyed the the different slides. Couple of questions. With the citizens liaison committee, you know, I really appreciate that effort that the police department does. And I'm just wondering with and virtual reality, what what's the next session of this liaison committee is going to look like? Are there talks about when that's going to start back up if it's not already in place? And is it possible to make it a virtual thing and possibly even livestreamed on a platform like YouTube? I have another question, but I'll start there.
So yes, Vice Mayor, appreciate the question. So we have been meeting virtually and ongoing. The COVID and the current national events have kind of splintered us up a little bit and just that a lot of our committee members have other things going on. So we we've been supporting them and listening into them. So one committee member, Deb Harris, is currently running the town halls on Live Black Experience. So we've kind of counted that as our quarterly presentation. Another committee member, Rose Tohe, recently presented the Indigenous Peoples' Day with presenters. And so that was kind of our outreach for the month, but we continue to meet monthly. And actually, since I submitted this staff summary agenda item, I've received three new applications to be on the committee. So if nothing else, you guys have helped me with advertising to help bring some new blood on board. So thank you. And then I'll let you ask your final question.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. And you know, I do believe that if we better publicize this committee and maybe even made it more accessible, there'd be hundreds that would want to join it, especially in today's political climate. And I think it would be very positive for the entire community to to witness and build that relationship with you and the police department and and just kind of have that connection. So well, maybe maybe you and I can talk offline at some point about this more and how we can make it more robust and open to the general public. But my other question is, the idea of a commission at the city. I've always thought that was a cool idea and I had heard that our previous chief Treadway had at one point thought about that as well. Do you know what the discussion was in terms of what the commission would look like at the city? And the reason I'm asking about the commission is because unlike the committee, the commission would be, you know, more accessible to the public. It would be hopefully livestreamed at a future date and and just more available for the public to kind of be a part of that process.
Yes, Vice Mayor, I was not part of those discussions. I know we have officers that sit on the traffic commission, the bike advisory committee and some of the the other ones as well, but I was not aware of the public safety commission that was being explored by former chief Treadway.
Okay. And and then my last follow up for that is is Chief Musselman, what are your thoughts on the commission at the city? Do you think it's a good idea? Do you think this is more than we need? And if we were to establish a commission at the city, what would you recommend it look like?
You know, Vice Mayor, I think that it actually takes some. I think it just creates another step in the process because they would want to go on budget retreats with the council and weigh in on matters of policy and how much resources should be put towards this program or that program. So I feel pretty comfortable about getting direction from the council, specifically with the the PBB, and I forget what they're called, the six or seven community focuses that we have. I feel we're getting plenty of direction now. And I have no problem following up with council members or the mayor when they call and say, hey, we heard about this. Let's look into it. And then we'll meet with them, show them the video, sit down with them, discuss what happened, how the officers responded. And then sometimes they'll even make, you know, suggestions. Well, maybe in the future, yeah, the officer didn't do anything wrong, but had they approached it in this way, it probably would have alleviated this person's fear type of thing. So I feel I'm getting plenty of direction now from mayor, council, as well as the city manager. But really, it's it's up to it's a policy decision by the mayor and council.
Thank you.
We have a city attorney who would like to speak. Then we'll go to the next person. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor Schimoni, I was a part of the group with Chief Treadway that originally formed the citizens liaison committee. And when we looked around and, you know, it might have been that time when there was there was some discussion about commissions. And when when we looked around to see, you know, what those look like and what they did, we really landed on the citizens liaison committee format because that really gave us, you know, kind of more interaction with the the community in getting those representatives from those underrepresented, you know, facets of of Flagstaff so that we had that conduit. And really, the in the beginning, the the purpose being, you know, getting information out through those people, giving getting information in through those people to to be even more, you know, transparent and get kind of more information. And we have participated in in many different things, immigration forums, you know, concerns regarding ICE in our community, you know, working, you know, and advertising and doing those presentations, trying to get people, you know, interested. And we've been kind of fighting to get people interested since the formation of the committee, you know, in the presentations that we've done. Obviously, with with national events, there's more focus on it now, which I think would be, you know, more helpful once kind of the COVID issues are gone to go back out and do more of those presentations again so that people, you know, have a better understanding. I think one of the presentations that we did do that I think is is very relevant now is know your rights, know an officer's authority. Because I think that there's a big disconnect in, you know, Because I think that there's a big disconnect in, um, you know, in our community with people who don't understand that, that what a law enforcement office, officer's authority actually is. And therein lies, I think, some contention sometimes. And so I think that would be a beneficial one to do, but I think Chief Treadway landed on this type of model because that would provide him with the most, um, direct input from our, our community in getting, you know, more information about, uh, you know, how they feel about what's going on and interactions with our officers.
Thank you for that.
I want to go to the city manager first, um, and just, city manager, can you remind us how many commissions we currently have? And then we're going to go to Ms. Solis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I might lean on our city clerk to, uh, help me with accuracy here. I know we have over 20 and my last recollection was that we had 22 or 24. I, I think that one or two of those, uh, commissions may be a little bit dormant. And then I, of course, council's aware of this, we have two commissions currently in the works. The most important word, the most urgent of which is our Indigenous, uh, commission, which is underway. And then a youth commission that the council has talked about. If I may, Madam Mayor, I'll call on the city clerk to either correct me if I made a misstatement or to add on to what I said.
Thank you, Greg. I, I believe at this time we are at 26 commissions. Um, and like you said, with the addition of, um, two others kind of coming into, into things right now. So we're, I think we'll be at that 28 here very soon.
Let's go to Ms. Solis.
Well, first of all, um, I want to reverberate my, my, um, thank you to, uh, Chief Musselman for a comprehensive presentation and specifically sharing what other municipalities and towns are doing with respect to public safety commission and and pointing out that our flagstaff police department is already, has already, um, has a culture of doing it right. So, and, uh, of course, uh, enumerating all, all the efforts that has been done so far. I have a question on the, the citizen liaison committee because I've been asked by, uh, a few, um, residents, how they can they be involved even if they may not be representing a segment of our community? They just want to be involved as to be in the committee or to do a neighborhood watch or a com, uh, hold on, my, my cat is, hold on. A neighborhood watch or a park watch or, uh, some kind of, uh, community policing, volunteering or involvement. So how can they be involved?
So thank you for that question, Councilmember Solis. They can be involved in multiple ways. We're always looking for volunteers to come in and help us out, um, with some of the things we do. We have volunteers work in our evidence department. We have volunteers that look through pond slips trying to match stolen property with pond property. We have volunteers that help us out at the firearms range that help in the armory. So yes, just have them email myself or our public information officer and we will hook them up with whatever volunteer opportunities we can find for them. The citizens liaison committee is capped at 15 members currently and I believe we have five vacancies and I have three current applications I'm going through. So if somebody's interested in that, it is pretty easy to find a section of our community that they represent. I mean, we have people from the interfaith council. We have people that served on the NAACP, people from the indigenous community, the African-American community, uh, et cetera. So we can find them, uh, a place. If they're interested, they can just email that flagstaffpdlc@gmail.com or email me directly and I can get them an application. Um, and then as far as the other opportunities, you know, usually we have National Night Out, we have the Citizens Police Academy. We do have block watches, although those have gone basically virtual here as of late. So if they're interested in starting a block watcher, becoming involved in one that's in their neighborhood, again, have them email myself or our public information officer and we will get them taken care of. And just to repeat, that email address was flagstaffpdlc@gmail.com.
Yes, well, thank you, Chief, for your, for your, uh, response. I'd like to, to, um, have a quick update on the police academy. I mean, citizen police academy, something like that, yeah?
Yeah, so we, when COVID hit, uh, the sheriff and the two chiefs and DPS got together and we felt it was best at that time to suspend the in-person classes, which we did. Afterward, we reached back out, we started back up. We asked those that felt safe coming back in just to finish their class. And some of them did, others have since moved away. But they are, it's currently ongoing with that existing class. And then our next class will start in the spring and we're hoping that there may be an online, way to access that online rather than in person, if that is how the person chooses. But right now, we're just trying to finish up the class that we started that we had to suspend.
Thank you, Chief. I am personally interested in signing up for that citizen police academy. Thank you.
I will email you the application.
Mr. McCarthy is followed by Ms. Whelan.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'm really glad that we do have a citizens liaison committee. If we didn't have something like that, I would be pushing for it for sure. Chief, um, I presume that those meetings are open to the public, is that correct? Either virtually or when they meet in person?
Yeah, sometimes we're discussing confidential information. So the monthly meetings aren't open to the public, but when we do the public presentations on know your rights, search and seizures, those are open to the public and we advertise those and we usually hold them at an offsite location, that way people feel comfortable coming forward. We've done, uh, the Murdoch Center, um, high schools, et cetera. But usually those are held out in the community. We've used the Klein Library before, um, that way people feel comfortable coming to them. And it's usually a variety of presenters that help with those.
So I did go to one of those where, uh, Chief Treadway was giving a presentation and it was very useful. And I guess I would, I would like to come to maybe sit in on one of your, uh, meetings. I think, you know, as a council person, I think it would be a good idea to just get a, a better idea of what's going on. So we can talk about that offline. And I, the other, my last comment is that I have sent you several requests for information and things that have come from citizens. And you've always been extremely responsive and I, I just want to thank you publicly for, uh, helping me with those questions. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir, thank you.
Ms. Whelan?
Thank you. Chief, I just want to tell you, thank you so much and thank you, Mary Ann, for, uh, taking this time and your team to take this time to put on all of these, uh, presentations and research options. You know, um, I've worked with you both for a while and, and I've always known that you had ideas and you had interest in, and, and, you know, being asked to take time to reflect and on your program or even on what we do as a council or what I did as a teacher, is, is not a negative thing. I see it always as a positive thing. And then it's, it's a matter of how do we work together? You've said for years that there are missing pieces. And so, you know, in these, uh, presentations, you've been clear about the missing pieces. And, and our community is saying there are some missing pieces because the data shows this and this and this. So I see us right now at, at a beautiful turning point. How can we, um, support our police and our fire by taking away, um, those duties that, that they should have never been, um, faced with? And, and how can we empower our nonprofits here in our community to, to pick up that pace? And, and I also see that in this time of reflection and, and working together, I don't know of anyone who was frightened not to just step up and say, this is like, this is how it's, it is and we need to change certain things. And I think we're all in agreement, uh, about certain things. But we do have an excellent police, uh, force. We have an excellent fire, uh, department. And, and now it's time to really dig down and take several things that we can do to make us more culturally responsive, to give those jobs, take those off of your plates and, and free up the time for you to be the peacekeepers that you've always trained your, your people to be. So, um, thank you for hanging in there with us. And again, I acknowledge all the work that, that you both have put in in your entire department. And, uh, I think the, the steps forward are clear for, for all of us. And that's truly about, uh, helping each other out and making change. So thank you so much.
You're very welcome, Councilmember Whelan. Appreciate your gratitude and comments.
So I wanted to weigh in, um, with council and just say that, you know, first and foremost, I believe we have a good police department. I believe we have a great police department. And the fact that we are not currently under one of the requirements from the US Department of Justice, I think, shows that. I think our police department, um, has historically tried to be on the front, are ahead of, or tried to look at different ways to be responsive to our community needs. One of the things I do think that we as council can give or can assist or can help with some of the things that Ms. Whelan just talked about when it comes to our police department is to, when we go into budget discussions, the next budget cycle. Um, and we are talking to the community about what it is that they'd like to see and how we want to prioritize stuff. The police department used to have a more robust community policing program. You know, um, I, um, first got introduced to our police department. It's been over 25 years now, you know, um, currently, um, our chief, um, right now, our interim chief Musselman was one of the first police officers in the King Street Squad and was part of the community policing efforts that we had in, um, Sunnyside as well as, um, Chief Treadway, as well as, um, Chief, um, Coop. Um, Coop was the, the police chief at the time when we started these efforts. And the police officers had the ability to do more, um, than just respond to calls. They had the ability to be a part of the community. They would go to the fiestas, they would go to youth group meetings, they would have the chance to go over to Killip. They had a chance to help plant, um, community gardens. I have a, a pitcher in Sunnyside of Chief Musselman's daughter up in a tree doing an apple bleeding project. And so, um, there was money for things such as block watch, you know, um, and so part of this had to do with what can neighborhoods do or how can neighborhoods be a part of things? There was money in the budget, um, that came, it was part of a neighborhood services concept where you could have a resident say, hey, I want to have a block party for my block. I want us to get to know one another, I want to talk about community policing. I want to actually build and engage and grow community. And so, you know, there was a hundred dollars that would go toward hot dogs and buns. And the officer that was part of that particular beat or that particular, um, section of town would could show up and it might be that they had, I don't know, hand sanitizer or something. But there was a, there was, there was active community policing and active inner engagements and interactions with law enforcement. It might be that code enforcement would show up because that particular resident said, hey, you know, this is a problem. There was actually funding put aside for, I'm going to go and we're going to buy a pallet of flowers and people are now going to plant a, um, a flower garden at the corner at the intersection that they could take care of and be proud of. And there was ways to really engage with community. And so I, I, I would tell council as we move forward that I really would strongly suggest that it's more than just having the citizens liaison committee. It's more than just council attending, um, the citizens academy of which we used to have more than one citizen academy a year and they used to be all over. But again, those things take funding. But it was also engaging with the communities at a community level and making sure that our officers had the ability to go in and be a part of the community. So when they arrived, it wasn't just always, um, in an enforcement capacity, but they had the ability to establish the relationships with the residents. They had the ability to interact with residents on a human level. And I believe that is really something that we should go back to and allow our officers to have the ability and the time. And also that takes some type of seed money. So I just want to mention that and put that out there. Are there any more comments on this? Okay, well, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, appreciate your continued support. Have a safe evening.
So we're going to go down to item number 13. This is council liaison reports. This would be for, um, committees that we set on, on behalf of being council members. Is there any for tonight? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot to mention. I just wanted to just, um, let the group know that the CJCC, uh, coordinate Criminal Justice Coordinating Council through the county is back up and running and had a good conversation and, um, are discussing, um, what next and what to do. And so very exciting to have this group, um, wanting to take action. And, um, and obviously the city, uh, team is working as well. And so we're looking at a bunch of different options and, and we're having good conversations around the subject of, of helping our most vulnerable and seeing, you know, what is that we need to do to really quality of life. That's all, thank you.
Ms. Triodegaard?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mayor. The B, uh, B-PAC met on October 12th. A couple of agenda items, uh, concerning the traffic signal cabinet pilot project, uh, will be moving forward. There was an award of an artist, uh, to put, uh, artists painting or renditions on these, um, public utility, uh, boxes you see around town that sometimes get graffiti. And so with that, hopefully we won't see the graffiti on those boxes on a couple, uh, boxes around town. Uh, one was downtown on San Francisco Street, uh, San Francisco and Butler. And the other one is up on Mesa, um, on Cedar Hill there at the entrance of Buffalo Park. And then the other one, um, item is on October 30th, there will be a budget retreat for B-PAC. Uh, because B-PAC does award dollars for art projects around our community. And so I'll report on that. Uh, there was a transportation commission, um, last week, but I had another commitment and I couldn't find any, um, update on that as far as, um, what took place during that meeting. So I'll provide at the next opportunity, so thank you.
Ms. Solis?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have three, uh, commissions report. Assignment to, uh, the, the airport, uh, tourism and Parks and Rec Commission. So yesterday, we had the Parks and Rec Commission meeting with two newly appointed commissioners, uh, joining the meeting. And, um, very productive and engaged, uh, meeting, uh, consisting of, uh, some ideas from commissioners about future, uh, discussion items at the commission level, such as, uh, opportunities for a public-private partnership with regards to Parks and Rec programming. A look at, a closer look and deep dive at cost recovery, uh, approach and, and possible policy with, uh, with respect to recreation programming. And update, update, um, the, the work plan for Parks and Rec. I do want to take this, uh, this, this moment to, to, uh, acknowledge our, our Parks and Rec, uh, staff for all the amazing work they've been doing. And reopening, uh, the fields and the, um, the Jade Lively Recreation Center. So that's, uh, for Parks and Rec Commission. And then last week, we had, the city had the annual Discover Flagstaff Stakeholder and Partner Meeting. You know, Discover Flagstaff is our tourism slash, uh, CVB department. And I had the opportunity to be part of the, the, online event that was streamed live from, from the Orpheum. Kudos to the Orpheum, um, for, that hosted the, the, the speakers from, from, from the area as well as, um, um, a live song present, presented by, uh, the local band Towers that rendered a heartwarming original song inspired by Flagstaff Lights and Dark Skies. The keynote speaker, presented, presented his, his, uh, his, um, speech online and that focus on the path toward, the path forward, identifying strategic recovery tools for tourism. Focus, focus on bringing strategic thinking and an innovative mindset to tourism marketing for rebuilding visitor and tourism economies. So that was fun. And then the third report, um, is on the Airport Commission that held a meeting on October 8th. The Airport Commission has currently three vacancies. So we're, you know, we're, we're recruiting for more volunteer commissioners. A new commission chair was selected, Eric Peterson. And there were some, some, some positive reports with, uh, increase in employment and remarkable increase in fuel flow, um, that's attributed to the operation of, um, the two commercial airlines as well as private, private, um, airplanes and, uh, military aircrafts. So there has been an increased aviation, aviation activity at the airport. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Mister, oh, excuse me, Ms. Whelan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Had the NAMO meeting, uh, the other day. And, um, just to bring you up to speed, that is Northern Arizona Municipal Water Users Association. We had written a letter earlier asking ADWR to extend the rural non, uh, Indian agriculture water reallocation time. They did get back to us saying that they really weren't ready to make a decision on those 17,000 acre feet, uh, and that they could extend this time, but they need more time to study. So that's still up in the air. We did ask that they notify us when, when they did study that. Also, uh, we are submitting a letter to oppose any river water going to St. George, Utah. And good news, um, we are having a, or NAMO is, is sponsoring a water utility leadership forum for operators and water, uh, managers. And, and this is for professional development hours. And that'll be in May 2021 in Clarkdale. And they're looking for sponsors. So I'll be transitioning off of NAMO. And it's, it's such an important, um, association that I strongly suggest that our new council, um, appoint, uh, a representative and, and get going on that, uh, association. So thank you, Mayor.
So I have a legal question.
Yes?
It has to do with our commissions and the chairs of our commissions and possible conflicts. So I don't know if it's an e-session question. I'm pretty sure it might be. And I apologize to council.
No, if that's the case, we just need to go into executive session.
So I would like to go in executive session because I need to give legal advice based on commissions and chairs and possible conflicts interest.
I'll second that.
This motion made by myself with a second by Mr. Aslan. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. So I think we exit out of this meeting and we wait to be called by the clerk.
Mayor, I am actually going to set up a meeting. You should get the invite very shortly and you guys can join through that forum.
Oh, that's better. Thank you.
Do we hang up this one?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Everybody, we are now back into our regular session. Is there anything left with our council liaison reports? Are we done with this item? Okay, we're going to go ahead and move forward to item number 14. Item number 14 is future agenda item request. We have one. This is 14A. This is a future agenda item request, a fair that has to do with the citizens petition requesting that the council declare a housing crisis in the city of Flagstaff through emergency resolution. This action should be followed by the prioritization of housing as a focus of investment action in support by the city. It's my understanding that we have a, um, public comment for this, for this citizens, um, initiative. But first I'd like to ask the city clerk, can you clarify exactly what we're doing here today with this?
Yes, Mayor. So tonight we have, um, like you said, a citizens petition in front of the council. And at this moment, the council will consider this just like they do a fair item. And if there are three members of council that would like to move this forward to a future agenda for a larger discussion, that's the path this would take. So, um, like I said, we are looking for those three in support, um, to move it forward to another agenda. And if I might, I, I would like to note that the, the petitioner is on the line, um, Davana McLaughlin. So she, um, is here to introduce the item as well when you're ready, Mayor.
Okay. So I would say that we would, um, take Ms. McLaughlin first, followed by any public comment that we have. And then we would turn the conversation into council. Ms. Whelan, did you have a comment before we get started?
No, Mayor.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and take Mr., Ms. McLaughlin first, followed by our public comment cards. And then we'll turn the comments inward. And I believe Ms. Whelan would be first. Thank you.
Is it time for me to go, Madam Mayor? This is Davana.
Yes, Davana.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Dear Madam Mayor and members of council, my name is Davana McLaughlin and I'm honored to serve as the CEO of Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona. The citizens petition submitted to council requesting the declaration of a housing crisis was done by myself personally. Although I serve as a member of the city's housing commission, I speak tonight as a Flagstaff citizen and not in my role as a commissioner. As you all know, Flagstaff's lack of decent, attainable, affordable housing has been a concern in our community for decades. Council was recently provided with a one-page sheet with housing data as Housing Solutions was honored to work in partnership with the city's housing section to reflect at a glance the housing need in our community. Our housing costs are 35% higher than the national average. Forty-five percent of all Flagstaff households are housing cost burdened paying more than the recommended 30% of gross monthly income on housing. That represents more than 22,000 Flagstaff citizens who live in housing cost burdened households. The ongoing COVID-19 pandemic brings to light the critical intersection between housing and healthcare. The need for affordable housing is significant and has impacted thousands of families in our community. I ask council to consider declaring a housing crisis and to prioritize implementation of strategies to create affordable housing. The crisis in our community can be addressed and positive changes can be made, but it's going to take focus, intention, and ongoing effort. With the citizens petition, we offer strategies such as prioritizing affordable housing on city-owned land, evaluating thoughtful changes to the city's zoning code to allow affordable housing in various zoning districts, moving forward in a timely fashion to identify a development partner for the redevelopment and expansion of public housing, combating the not-in-my-backyard sentiment that we hear every time affordable housing is considered, and creating a public education and outreach plan to educate the community about what affordable housing looks like and who affordable housing, uh, needs in our community. We do not presume to think we have come up with all possible strategies and we acknowledge a strategy or two might take more time to implement. We ask for the housing crisis declaration to move forward so city staff, the housing commission, and council can weigh in on additional strategies and the feasibility of the strategies we've offered. Now is the time for bold action to demonstrate that housing investment is truly a priority for all of us. This council was bold in declaring a climate crisis. Your citizens are relying on bold action again to meet the pervasive need for affordable, decent housing for the people who work and live here. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Are there any questions for, um, Ms. McLaughlin? Okay, we're going to go ahead and move forward with citizen, um, input, public comment.
Oh, hold on just.
Hello?
Please begin.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please begin.
Okay. Hi, my name is Yitun Lin. Uh, thank you for allowing me, um, to read my public comments. So as someone who has been living in Flagstaff collectively for over 20 years, I feel fortunate to be able to live a quality life in this beloved community. The friendly people, the likeliness of the city, the diverse cultures, and its natural beauty have always drawn me back to Flagstaff after several relocations. However, since returning last year, I no longer feel the same as I had felt before. The most noticeable change is that the wealth gap has become increasingly prevalent. As more out-of-town second home owners crowd our neighborhoods and the big box buildings rise in our skyline, there are more people struggling with housing security than ever. More hardworking people who make our community safe, who provide quality education to our kids, who give loving care for our city seniors, and many others who create quality living for people in Flagstaff, yet they are not able to afford to rent or buy a home for themselves in the city they serve. So this housing crisis is tearing our beloved community apart. So that's why I wholeheartedly support this initiative to ask the city council to declare a housing crisis in the city of Flagstaff. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Mayor, no, there is not.
Thank you. We'll start the council conversation, Ms. Whelan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So I, I agree and I would really like this to, to move forward. You know, we've gotten some, uh, excellent emails kind of challenging this idea. Like this has been going on for 40 years. Why call it a crisis now? Well, you know, if, if you don't, um, do something about the crisis 40 years ago or 10 years ago, the crisis gets bigger and bigger and bigger. So that's why we do something about it now. And if this empowers by creating this document, if this empowers and, and motivates action in the way that, that we all can get behind, then, uh, this is absolutely the way to go. And I hope council agrees. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Um, I have Mr. Odegaard followed by Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, um, I'm in favor of moving this item forward. And I really appreciate, um, the response from the community on this item. So thank you.
Mr. McCarthy?
I would support having a future agenda item on this and a discussion about it.
Counsel? Mr. Aslan?
I also would support this.
Ms. Solis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support discussion moving forward.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council and Davana, so much for your efforts in bringing this to us. I definitely support this moving forward. And I just thought, you know, and reflecting back towards the beginning of our meeting and, and Joe Galley from the chamber's comments, I just, if Joe's still listening, you know, this is a great opportunity that we could team up and have the chamber's support in, you know, not only this declaration, but in the future housing bond and other things like that that we can talk later about. But yes, I do support this moving forward. Thank you.
So I think that's everybody on council has weighed in. I'd like to go ahead and weigh in as well. First and foremost, I am very appreciative of Ms. McLaughlin bringing this item forward. I think that, um, it, 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 it is long overdue. I think I mentioned several months back in looking at the history that I could find about this issue. We go back to like 1922, 1925, um, with the fact that there's an affordable housing crisis. It's interesting that we, um, we're supposed to have another public speaker tonight and he chose not to speak, but he did send our clerk an email that stated that the chamber was in favor of this particular, um, motion as well, or this particular citizens initiative. And that was a greater, um, chamber, greater Flagstaff Chamber of Commerce. Now, what I would like to tell council is that I think it's, it's very easy to move something like this forward, right? A citizens petition that has to do with declaring a housing crisis, especially after the conversations that we had tonight and other conversations. But it will take more than just an act of council saying we want to have further conversations about this to actually address the issue. We've had conversations for decades about this. Um, and we've had several different ways that we can move forward. This council alone, about two weeks ago, we had a conversation about Schultz Pass property. And council chose not, uh, there was not political will to move that forward. Earlier, before we broke during the summertime, we had a conversation about the old Public Works yard and the fact that the original conversation was to build a couple of bungalows for seniors that need to have housing. So while I think that this is a very easy lift to move forward, a conversation about declaring a crisis about affordable housing and housing here in Flagstaff, it's going to take more than just lip service. It's going to take more than proclamation. It's going to take more than declaring a crisis. When we talked about the, uh, crisis when it came to climate change, um, council had a lot to say about that. We talked about putting, uh, resources toward it. We talked about allocating the budget. We talked about moving the budget. We talked about what we could be doing instead of. There was a lot of conversation. Tonight council's like, yeah, I want to have a conversation. I want to declare a climate, excuse me, a housing crisis. When we actually have the, when we actually have the When we actually have the conversation about declaring a housing crisis, I really hope that council has the same robust conversation that we did for climate change and that we start looking at the pieces of property that council has and could actually be doing something with to address this issue and we start moving those forward. That is really what I hope happens with the conversation, rather than just declaring it to crisis and then continue to do the same thing that we do, especially when people come up and say "not in my backyard" or "I want to protect the sunflowers." So with that, I look forward to having the conversation and it seems like we have a seven-zero. Thank you. So we're going to move forward now to item number fifteen. And item number fifteen is our city manager's report. City manager, do you have anything to share from your report?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and council. I did not call anything out for a discussion. Of course, we highlight the award that was received by Amy Palmer and we really highlighted an important event which just cannot be overstated right now, which is the moving into the new courthouse facility. I would invite you, if you have not done so, I would ask council to take a read on the update from the police department regarding the challenges they are having recruiting officers. It's a good read and it's very informative. And then I would invite you to give a nice look because there are many images to accompany it, but the update from the Capitol Projects team on all the projects that are underway and nearing completion, very informative and great photos to accompany that narrative. Finally, I will note that we had the privilege of meeting out on the Fourth Street Overpass on Friday. Council was there. The media was there. It was not a big public event, of course, because of COVID. Social distancing was indeed respected and we had a few officials from the developer construction team as well as ADOT to accompany the mayor with some very nice comments. It was a nice way to bring a little closure to that project and it looks absolutely beautiful and functions even better. So with that, I will answer any questions that you may have, Mayor or council.
Counsel? Okay, thank you, city manager.
I'll ask a question if I can.
Okay, Mr. Aslan.
I didn't get to the chat box in time. City manager, I'm wondering about an opportunity to tour the inside of the new courthouse. And obviously, you know, I'm happy to extend that invitation to include all of us and others, but what's the plans for that?
Let us work on it and we'll report back. It's a great request and suggestion and we'll get right back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. So we're going to move to item number sixteen. This is our COVID-19 updates. Sixteen A is community partner and city staff updates on COVID-19. Ms. Whelan, did you have a comment for this section or for the previous one?
Oh, I think I missed this section. I wanted to talk to the city manager. May I do that now?
Yeah, you can go ahead and do that now.
Mr. Clifton, I would like to ask you to bring back the Commission on Diversity Awareness, their presentation. You know, it seemed like it wasn't a full presentation and I think a lot was missed. And I believe there was a mix-up with being told they only had ten minutes, while really they had like twenty. I think there's some important pieces of that survey and direction forwards that I would like council to hear before things change. We do that.
Thank you, council member Whelan. This, I'm taking good notes as we speak. After this meeting, I will share my notes with the city clerk, Stacy Salzberg, and we'll figure out a way to get it back in front of you and make sure that it's a thorough presentation with enough time for dialogue.
Thank you so much.
Our pleasure.
Okay, now we're going to go back to the COVID-19 updates. This is item number sixteen A. I believe this is Ms. Anderson.
Yes, Mayor and council. Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to pull up our presentation so we can get started. So this evening, we actually have updates from a community partner. NAU is here with us and they'll provide some updates from campus. We'll talk about impacts of COVID-19 on city staff. We'll go over the data that we look at from Coconino County Health and Human Services, Arizona Department of Health Services, as well as Northern Arizona Healthcare. And then we'll end with some information and conversation about some ideas on a Halloween drive-through event. So I'm going to stop sharing this so I can pull up NAU's presentation if you'll give me one moment. And I will turn it over to Josh Mayer from NAU.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council, and city staff. I'm actually going to turn it over to Kristy Farley, who's our VP for External Affairs and Partnerships. And, you know, she's really been at the forefront of our COVID-19 response here at NAU. She's been interfacing with county, state, and federal government to secure resources and expertise in our campus response to ensure the safety of our students, staff, and our surrounding community. And Kristy will show you what our numbers look like currently and share with you our effective mitigation strategies and our plans for moving forward. So I'd like to turn it over to Kristy Farley.
Thank you, Josh, and good evening, Mayor and council. We appreciate the opportunity to be with you again this evening. And I appreciate the discussion that we have regularly had about NAU and our partnership here with the community to increase the amount of testing available and our collaboration on prevention and mitigation strategies with our students, our campus community, and as those translate out into the larger Flagstaff and county community. So if we could flip to the next slide, please? Thank you. NAU, at the request of many, increased the information specific to our campus. As you know, during the last presentation, we talked about the countywide data that is available, of which NAU's testing is part of that information and it's developed down to the ZIP code. And we have integrated most of our information into the countywide information in order to not cause a level of confusion by the information that's out there and to partner in a single source of information. But as there were additional requests about how much testing is going on specifically on the NAU campus and what are the number of results on the NAU campus and what is the positivity from those test results given on the NAU campus, we are weekly providing the information related to the number of tests conducted on the NAU campus. This information provides those tests that are administered at the fieldhouse and by our NAU campus health services. So those are aggregated. It does include the community that is tested at the fieldhouse. So it is all tests conducted on our NAU campus. And as you can see, the first two weeks, we were ramping up with our ASU partner for saliva testing as we kicked that off in September, right after the Labor Day weekend. And then the last week will always appear to be a little bit low as we post on Friday and we don't yet have Friday or Saturday results. Those will come in the following week. But we are generally testing somewhere between twenty-six hundred and close to three thousand individuals a week on the NAU campus. This represents about twelve to thirteen percent of our NAU campus community that we are testing. And this includes our required mitigation testing where we pull approximately two thousand individuals for selected testing each week, the majority of those students. Let's see. This chart provides the additional insight into what our test results are. You can see that of the tests performed on the NAU campus, what our positives, negatives, and positives are, as well as the positivity rate generally from those tests. If we could go to the next slide, please? This slide comes directly from the county website. We have worked closely with them to align the information. And as I mentioned, NAU is represented in this information as we are fully integrated into the community. And we have shared all efforts related to prevention, decisions that have been informed by both the science community locally and the healthcare community from our own campus as well as the Flagstaff community. So we've worked hand-in-hand with the county to increase the availability of testing as well as to enhance the data that's available on this website. And we not only provide a link to the full county dashboard, but we have added this direct chart to our dashboard because we think that it provides the best glimpse. You can clearly see the peak in testing that has resulted from NAU adding the fieldhouse site to our location and the mitigation testing. I'd like to point out a couple of things from this chart. You will see the week before, NAU welcomed individuals back for the fall semester when we began remotely. That would be the week of August eighth, that the positivity rate in the county was at seven-point-two percent. Since NAU has been back in session, the positivity rate has not gone above six-point-nine percent. As of two weeks ago, a week and a half ago, when this chart was updated, it was at four-point-seven percent. And you saw on the last slide that we were down below that from the positivity rates specific to the testing coming off of the NAU campus. So we continue to see the positivity rate going down. We saw that spike after the Labor Day holiday. We're happy to see both the positivity rate going down. And another measure of the NAU community health in particular is the number of active isolation cases which we are managing both on and off campus. We report this on a weekly basis as well. That number was seventy-two as of last Friday and we have seen that number also decline on a weekly basis. If we could go to the next slide, please? I understand that at a prior council meeting, there was discussion about the coordination between NAU and the city related to signage. And we are happy to continue to increase efforts around awareness of COVID-19 and prevention strategies. I thought it would be helpful for the council to see during this time where external visitors to our NAU campus are extremely limited. We wanted to share with you what our signage does look like throughout the campus. And this is just a sampling so that you can see in the elevators, throughout the dining areas, on our cleaning surfaces, in the restrooms, masks required throughout, how to space yourself, know your symptoms, and of course reinforcing the efforts that we are all in this together with highlights around prevention. So we also reinforce on the Jack's Are Back website, the five things that Jack should know. Of course, wearing a mask on the NAU campus is critical, but we have also stressed the efforts around the prevention of these efforts into the community and we have a link to the city proclamation and the county requirements as well. And we're excited that we are ready to take the next steps in coordination with the city on your mask-wearing campaign. And I know our team has met with Heidi Hansen to identify NAU leaders to participate in that effort and act as leaders in the mask campaign throughout the community. So Mayor Evans and council, that is my update and I am happy to answer questions. Oh, if I could add just one thing, we did release our spring semester information to the campus community today. And so I thought the council might be interested just in a quick update on plans for the spring semester. We have advised our student body and our campus community that while we intend to keep the January eleventh start date, we intend, based on our successful slow return to campus in the fall semester, that we will do a two-week remote start so that individuals can return in a paced way. All individuals will be required who are residing on the NAU campus to return with a negative COVID test uploaded that has occurred within seven days. That information and specific details will be sent out through their housing renewal information. And then NAU has postponed spring break to the end of the spring semester, meaning that we will end the semester early and will not have travel during the semester in order to reduce folks leaving and coming back to our community. So with that, Mayor Evans, thank you very much for the time this evening.
Counsel, are there any questions or comments? I don't see any, but I do have one myself personally. Okay, I'll start with the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and Ms. Farley. Thank you so much for your update and your willingness to be here with us to discuss this. It's really important and I really value that, appreciate that. Question, looking at the next semester, I have a couple of questions, but first one is, you know, what lessons have we learned in this current, you know, effort that we've done through NAU with the students? And then the second question is in regards to contact tracing. So maybe just start with that first one.
Sure, Vice Mayor Simoni. I think that we have learned the importance of partnerships, the efforts around clear communication with our students. We have clearly provided guidelines to them, the importance of providing immediate penalties related to enforcement actions. We are in the process of second notices related to those who did not comply with mitigation testing. We have provided, as the council mayor, enforcement actions through our dean of students for disciplinary action to those who have not complied with the requirements for our campus and student behavior. And so I think all of those things are very important. We have provided a quick turnaround on testing and I think that immediate information and response back to our community has been very helpful. And I think all of the variety of options that students have, we've been asked whether or not fully remote status will continue to be available to those students who choose it for the spring and that will be an option. We've also been asked by faculty whether they will be able to begin, if necessary, for things like clinicals and certain labs during the remote period, if those need to begin immediately to keep students on track, whether that will be a possibility. So we've definitely learned the need to be flexible and to be accommodating.
Great, thank you.
And then you asked about contact tracing.
Yeah, you know, it's tough because, you know, we do talk about enforcement and I think that enforcement's important. But then with that enforcement does come, you know, some struggles to get that accountability right. And I've heard about some of the struggles to get that. And I've heard about some of the struggles to get that accountability from the students and actually complying and collaborating with us to allow us to contact trace. What are your thoughts on, on how that's going? And, and, you know, I know I'm asking you to be vulnerable and talk about maybe a tough subject to communicate about because I know we're trying to do our best, but how's it going?
So Vice Mayor, I'm not sure that trying to contact our students is much different than trying to contact other members of the community. I think that individuals are hesitant to return phone calls to individuals that they don't know, to pick up the phone to numbers that they don't recognize. And I think that if we're going to be honest about this conversation, I think that that would be the response related to all of contact tracing. So NAU has doubled the contact tracing workforce and matched that investment at the county. And so we are almost complete with all of those hirings. We have five individuals out of the seven who have completed their training and are fully integrated into that county team at this point and are working on completing cases. And so the information that I'm getting back from those folks is that the, those that are particularly in isolation already, they are getting good responses back. I've talked to individuals that are in quarantine and those, I've talked to parents who have students who've been quarantined, who have roommates who tested positive. So I think that while it is not a perfect system, I think that that is true across the board. And we have increased the efforts and doubled down, and I think that that will only continue to improve.
Thank you for that, Ms. Farley, and I agree with you. A couple of last quick questions. Can you talk a little bit about faculty? You know, I know that there was a lot of concern by faculty leading into the semester. How has that gone? Where would you say the faculty morale is at today in looking ahead?
I think that everyone continues to be cautious. I certainly would not pretend to speak for our faculty. I, you know, I speak with a lot of individuals. I have conversations with those that are in the labs and those that are in a variety of different classrooms. And so I think that it varies across the campus. But I think that they are also seeing really good things with the mitigation testing. They are very happy with the access to free testing anytime that they want. They're happy that we have required testing so that we are catching the asymptomatic individuals and, and acting quickly. And I think that they also are hopeful, as everyone is, that I just described, that we will continue to increase the contact tracing efforts.
Very last question, thank you for bearing with me. Can you just remind me what the plan is with testing? I, I remember hearing that, you know, there's going to be a shift and we're going to, you know, end the partnership with ASU and work through the health department on campus. Can you just, maybe just give me an update and just tell me what, what the plan is?
Sure, when students go home at Thanksgiving, we will close fieldhouse site as we will have a much reduced number of individuals on our campus between Thanksgiving and the beginning of January. So that's true, we will be using our campus health services during that period of time when we have a very limited number of people on the Flagstaff campus. And then we are working through to extend the contract with ASU and what the start date will be when we begin that back in January. And we expect that it will be before students come back and even before we start remote learning.
Wonderful, thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Yes, you bet, thank you. Mayor Evans?
Yeah, so I wanted to, and I'm going to turn on my camera because I wanted to kind of just show you, right? First of all, I completely appreciate all that, you know, NAU is doing and the concern you are taking and the signage and everything. Really, what I wanted to just point out, and Josh, Josh, I don't see Josh here tonight, but
Yes. Oh, yes, he wouldn't miss you.
Okay, so, because I'm looking at this, though, I got this in the mail, I don't know if you can see it, right? It has to do with the welcome kit. And so I'm happy you're here, Josh, because I wanted to just chat about this. We had had a meeting and we had talked about, you know, instead of going door to door like we normally go, we were going to send something, right? And so we got this kit, and I live like in the neighborhood, so the neighborhood got this kit. But we had talked about the kit, including something that was more, that's something that was directly addressing the issue of COVID, right? So there was this letter that was signed by myself and the president. There was this neighborhood resources sheet that everybody got. And I guess it's not really showing up on the camera. But we had talked about putting a mask in there. We had talked about putting a piece that was very specific to, hey, this is how NAU is addressing COVID. And that wasn't in, that wasn't in here. And I do think that if there's going to be another mailer or something that goes out for the spring semester, it really should include that because I think it would be helpful. And I think it would show, you know, really be a very firm statement that all of us are in partnership and we are all working together on this. Do you remember that conversation, Josh?
I do, thank you, Mayor. And to address the mask issue, there was an issue of procurement in securing the volume of masks that we required. And so that's why it didn't include the, the masks. And beyond that, I mean, I think it just came down to an issue of, of timing as to when we wanted to make sure that we got all the information out to the community versus when our semester was starting up. You know, as, as you know, there was, you know, all around, all across the board, there was struggles in, in securing PPE and what have you. And so that's, that's why the masks weren't included in the community packet.
And we did start the semester earlier, and I know that there was, there was crunch time trying to get all the information out. I would just say that now that we're looking forward to the spring semester, you know, the information that went out was good, but I do think including that mask and then like a statement very specifically about, hey, this is what we're doing, I think that would go far with our residents.
So Mayor, I appreciate that, and Josh and I can have a follow-up conversation on that suggestion as we prepare for the spring semester.
Thank you. Counselor, is there anything else for our partners? I do not see any other comments, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you very much for having us, have a good evening.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Is there an update by Ms. Anderson on this section? There is, I see you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Evans. So our next topic will be the impacts of COVID on city staff. So I will move on to that slide and I'll turn it over to Chief Gaylord and then Heidi Hansen.
Thank you, Shannon. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Flagstaff Fire Department had a tough week last week at the hands of the virus. We had three firefighters that were diagnosed with COVID. We had a secondary impact of nine firefighters having to go into quarantine. And that was, that was a, the resulting impact of staffing caused us to have to go into our, our reduction in force and our pandemic planning documents. And we actually had to take a unit down on two shifts. We took down Rescue Two in Center City. We were able to maintain firefighting and EMS units in all areas of the city. There was no losses of basic service delivery in, in any part of the community. Since that time, we've, we've had to make some plan adjustments to a couple of our emergency planning documents as far as continuity of service within the fire department. We have gone to phase two mask policy, which in effect is, as our firefighters work 48-hour shifts, they're now in mask in the stations and for the entire tour with, with obviously some, some flexibility in areas where they are in a dorm room and other areas where they might be able to distance. The resulting initial shock of that resulted in, so far, in about a week's time, 27 mandatory staffing incidences, which is an extremely high number. And what that means is 27 times we had to mandate mandatory staff and have someone stay in on their day off. And our firefighters have completed staffing such that we don't anticipate, unless we have negative impacts because of quarantining or additional impacts associated with actual members contracting the virus. We seem to be ahead of it, but the stress on our folks is, is very much in place, but they're all shouldering it and making sure we get out and take care of the community and staff, staff our emergency response units. We also dusted off, we have not had to use it, but we dusted off and revisited our quarantine arrangements we've made for our staff in the event they needed to or desire to have quarantine facilities separate from their families. Those agreements were dusted off. Special thanks to our risk manager, Dean Kokenhour, who assisted us with that. And we also have had some plan revisions associated with navigating CDC's requirements for quarantining. We were able to, with our team, and provide updated and improved guidance on how to, how to navigate those waters. So tough week last week. I'm hoping that we have found a way to mitigate those circumstances. The contacts now, as family members, spouses, children are in the community, the contacts seem to be coming from those interactions in our family environments. And so I last, at last check, our folks are, are getting through those, those illnesses and are moving through. And we're, we're, we're hopeful for the health of them and their families. And, and we'll try to get them back to work as soon as they're healthy and ready to go.
Thank you, Chief Gaylord, for that update. Mayor, does any members of council have any questions for Chief Gaylord before we move on to hear from Heidi Hansen?
It doesn't look like a council. We do have Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I just wanted to share concern for your, your team and their families and all, obviously the greater community experiencing COVID. But just wish the, the employees and their, and their families a fast and safe recovery through this period. I know it's, it can be a scary experience and concerning for, you know, the whole family, both the, the fire family and the individuals' families. So just thinking about them right now and wishing them all well. And, and if there's anything we can do to support them, let, let us know.
Thank you for that, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Gaylord. Sorry, Shannon. No, go ahead, Heidi, thanks.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, Heidi Hansen, Economic Vitality Director. I just wanted to share with you that we've had some cases, positive cases in, with our Discover Flagstaff team. And they reside, as you know, in the historic house, the Milligan House, adjacent to City Hall. Because of that, we have decided to shut the house down to have a proper cleaning and to let the staff continue to work from home. You probably knew this, they were working from home when we first had our executive order. And so they're able to do so with no issues because they aren't as community-facing as our visitor center is. Our visitor center is open for business, they are doing fine. We haven't had any cases with that staff. And I think it's because they're definitely in PPE all day long, monitoring the door with an exit in or an entrance in and an exit out. Our library staff is doing fine. They have had cases within family members which had caused staff to get tested, but luckily, none of them have come back positive. We have had to gate off a lot of areas in the library for those that are coming in that are requesting computer time, which we're allowing now just so that they don't wander the library and infect anybody if they were a patron that might have COVID and not know about it. But in the county libraries, we've had several issues. And so we've been working on those by case-by-case basis and working with Jimmy Jane if there's a need to shut down a certain facility or library, rather. And so, so far, it hasn't been huge spikes or anything like that. The airport has been fine, they have an administrative staff upstairs and they stay masked. And then ARC, of course, is in their own building. And then the community investment team, they work within City Hall and they're, they're spread out on their hours of operation, tend to like the rest of the city staff. But we do have some people with some compromised immune systems. So I have requested to our Community Investment Director, Dave McIntyre, to ask them to completely work from home right now, since we're seeing a spike in cases. The thing with Discover Flagstaff that I wanted to share was the way that they've reacted to the virus is very different. I had one that was incredibly sick and it was a very scary time dealing with it for 12 days, this individual. While another individual has basically had milder symptoms, but has now infected their family. So the bigger message is for us to continue to, you know, wash our hands and mask up and social distance. But for now, you won't see the Milligan House open for anybody to come in. If they need visitor services, they would be directed to go to the Visitor Center on 1 East Route 66. And again, the testing is seamless at Port Tuthill with the saliva testing. So we're encouraging anytime staff has been in contact with somebody that has tested positive to please encourage, we've been encouraging them to go get tested to make sure that they are fine. And then we are following the same protocols as Chief Gaylord spoke about with the 10 to 14 days before they can return to our, our place of business after they were having no symptoms. And so just wanted to let you know, it's really hit home for us. And we're doing all that we can to make sure that our city staff is safe and those that are sick are recovering. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Any questions, Mayor or council, for Heidi?
Okay, I don't see any.
Thank you, Mayor Evans. So we'll move on to the data. Our first slide here is looking at the number of weekly cases. Here in Coconino County, again, the blue line identifies the Flagstaff area. You'll see at the end of the week of October 3rd, we had 134 cases. That has increased slightly with a few more reports coming in. But week ending October 10th, we are at 165 new cases in the Flagstaff area. When we look at the number of additional cases since October 10th, those are here in this blue line, the 10, 43, 22, and four cases. So we will see continued new cases coming in at the end of this week as well. When we look at the number of hospital admissions for Coconino County residents, we did see an increase of seven between the week ending October 3rd and week ending October 10th, for a total of 17 in the county. Looking at our COVID-related deaths, this report does now show one COVID-related death the week of October 3rd. This was a late report that came in, so you would not have seen this on last week's report. Same thing actually happened this week. We heard in our update from Coconino County Health and Human Services on Monday morning that there was another late report that came in. So we do have one death again for week ending 10/10. So we do have one death again for week ending 10-10 that you'll see on the next weekly report chart. Our community transmission level remains moderate. This is because we've got substantial for the number of cases because we are greater than 100 cases per 100,000. But our percent positivity in COVID-like illnesses remain in the minimal level. So that's why our community remains in moderate. Moving on to the Arizona Department of Health Services dashboard, this data is as of September 27th, 2020. We remain at a moderate level for the same reasons, although we're in substantial for number of cases, percent positivity, and the COVID-like illnesses remain in minimal, which impacts that, excuse me, the reopening status to remain moderate. Our last data update here is from Northern Arizona Healthcare. This is demonstrating the number of COVID patients. The number of positive patients did increase to 14, as well as pending patients increasing to 15. We do still have capacity to deal with the seriously ill, but we are seeing an uptick in these hospitalization numbers as we saw in the previous Coconino County chart and also as we witness here. So the next item that we'd like to talk to Council about is a Halloween drive-through idea. Dean Kokenhour is going to kick this conversation off, and so I'll turn it over to Dean.
Good evening, Mayor, distinguished Councilmembers. Staff has had several conversations in reference to how we can do this safely. Risk management has been in discussion with staff members. And I certainly believe for our most precious and our youngest citizens that there, there are ways that we can do this and still have a safe event for everyone involved. And with that, I will pass off to Rebecca Sayers and let her tell you what that might look like.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for the time tonight. We started talking with Parks and, I'm Rebecca Sayers, Parks and Recreation Director. And our staff started talking a couple of months ago about a way that we might be able to offer a safe alternative to door-to-door trick-or-treating. We contacted the library to see if they might be interested in partnering with us and started talking through some ideas of what we might be able to do. Yes, and this, this is a little bit in response to Councilmember Aslan's fair item that he brought forward quite a while ago. And it, it got us thinking about what we might be able to do. So we also have Michelle on the line from the libraries. And after I present, she can add information for the library. So what we're thinking we would be able to do is at our rec centers and libraries, we would decorate the parking lots with Halloween themes. We would have staff out in costumes. Of course, they would be masked and gloved and distancing from each other and from the vehicles. The idea is that vehicles would drive through the parking lots and, you know, wave at staff and we could be doing funny stuff, I suppose. And then they would pick up treats and arts and crafts and things toward the end of the drive-through. This would all be in partnership with, with some virtual activities on our Facebook pages, like virtual costume contests and pumpkin carving contests, things like that. We would deliver the treats and arts and crafts activities in a safe and fun way, either through delivering candy through PVC tubes. I'm sure you've seen a lot of those examples around. Or having treats out on a hook that they could, that we could reach toward the car and they could pick up the treats off the hook or off of a tray. The library has been doing contactless delivery and curbside pickup for months now, and we can follow their lead. We've also been doing something similar at the Senior Center for meal delivery. So we think that we could offer a safe alternative to the door-to-door trick-or-treating. We have had community members reach out to see if there's anything that we could do. I know that Council's been getting some requests about this holiday as well. So those are our ideas and we're happy to take any feedback or thoughts or direction from the Council. Actually, I'm sorry, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Michelle, if she's with us, to see if she has anything to add for the library.
Thank you, Rebecca. My name is Michelle Brasso and I am the Library Deputy Director of City Services. So it's my departments who have been doing all of the curbside delivery, curbside printing, getting art kits and snacks and things to the community for months now. So we have got this down to a science. We are really great at social distancing, making sure we are protecting our staff and our patrons. We've got some great ideas for social distancing, delivering of our treats. We'll have crafts, of course, literacy stuff. We even have some bags for adults that we're excited about for adult crafts. The staff are going to be dressing up and we're going to have a pumpkin decorating contest and then just spray all the pumpkins. And we'll also be decorating the library parking lots. We're kind of going all out as far as just giving people something to look at, but not enough to like slow down and cause traffic issues. But we are so excited for the opportunity. We want to thank Parks and Rec for reaching out to us to include us in this proposal. And I really hope City Council gives us the opportunity to see our kids again and our families that we miss so much, even if it's just waving through a car window. Thank you.
Okay, um. I'm gonna go to Ms. Whelan first.
I have nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, any other Councilmembers?
Mayor?
Ms. Odegaard? I'll go Mr. Odegaard first and then the Vice Mayor. Hello?
Yep, sorry about that, Mayor. My mute button was not unmuting. And so I really want to thank Rebecca and Michelle for this opportunity to do something for our community and I'm supportive. So that's the only comment I wanted to make.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, Councilmember Odegaard, I agree with your comments fully. Thank you so much to staff for your hard work on this and your efforts to keep us moving forward and, and being positive with, with the current reality that we're working with. I just wanted to mention to Deputy St. Andrew Anderson, in, in the slides, you know, a lot of the data that were being, that's being shared with us is, you know, from the 10th of the month, the 15th of the month, and then the 27th of the month as well. And I just want, I know that, you know, data has a lag already. And, and so it is hard to stay on top of. But I just wanted to know, is this, is that something that, you know, can be, is there anything that can be done about that from your perspective? Or is that just the most recent, most up-to-date data that we can talk about, given that today is the 20th of October?
So thank you, Vice Mayor Shmoni, for that question. The data is actually updated each Friday. So the weekly report that, that I present to you from Coconino County Health and Human Services is a Friday report. So what I received as of this last Friday was the week ending October 10th. And then this Friday, we'll get the next week. My understanding that the lag is caused by needing to be sure that they have the testing information for the week, as well as the electronic lab reporting that goes to Arizona Department of Health and Human Services before it comes back to Coconino County Health and Human Services for reporting purposes. So that's the Coconino County Health and Human Services data. My understanding from the Arizona Department of Health Services website is they are intentionally leaving a two-week lag because they think it takes that long to actually get all the data, which kind of makes sense. Because if you think about, when we received the report, week ending 10-10 in there, we're seeing some updates that actually happened the week of October 3rd. So there is some data that comes in later. And so I think the reason that you see things a week, two weeks later is in order to make sure that they have the majority of the data before they're releasing that to the community. Hopefully that answers your question.
It does. My only follow-up, Deputy St. Andrew, is, is that last Friday is the 16th. I must read my calendar incorrectly, but is there a reason why we're not necessarily receiving data today in this presentation from the 16th? Other than, you know, maybe you put together this, this presentation prior to the 16th?
So the information that's published on the 16th is from the week prior, which is week ending the 10th.
Right.
So, so this coming Friday, we'll receive the information ending week, week ending 10-16.
But you, just so I'm understanding this correctly, you agree that by today, though, we have data from the 16th that we could be talking about?
They don't publish their weekly report until Friday. So I won't get all of the new data until this coming Friday for week ending 10-16.
Oh, I see.
You might, you might, you might see on their website, the weekly report will show 10-16, but all of the other data that we provide to you won't be completed until this Friday.
Okay, I think that, I think I get it now. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm sorry I didn't include dates earlier here.
Oh, it's fine.
Mr. Aslan?
Good evening, team. Thank you so much for the work you guys have put into doing some Halloween stuff. It's, it's nice to see. I know I brought that up at one point and it's, it's encouraging to, to see that, you know, the, the city family was able to get together and, and make something happen for Halloween. And I appreciate the shout-out, Rebecca, and great work. And also, I'm sorry to hear that we're starting to see cases within our city family. And I don't know that we're going to be revisiting our, our phases tonight at all. I'm not sure we should. But definitely something to keep in mind as we move forward and as an uptick seems to be occurring in a lot of different areas. I would just want to give my regards to Chief Gaylord as well and the, and the fire team. And I can only imagine how frustrating that is to be at the firehouse and wearing a mask. But obviously, you know, you have to take this stuff very seriously. And it seems like everyone's doing what they can while trying to do the order of the day, which is city business, which has to get done. And I just appreciate everybody working so hard under such difficult circumstances to keep the, the mechanics of the city moving along and keep residents, you know, who aren't always necessarily grateful for, for things that they don't see from finding things to complain about. But anyway, I hope everybody has a safe Halloween out there. I guess we have one more meeting before Halloween, so I can save that for later. But really encouraging to see that some things will be happening. Rebecca, I don't know if you want to get on your camera and show us what you have in mind for doing some silly things. Maybe you can chicken dance for us or something, or not. But I appreciate all the hard work you guys are putting in, thoughtful work you're putting into this festive holiday.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan, and I respectfully decline, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Rebecca, for declining that suggestion. We'll go ahead and move forward through our agenda if there's nothing else. We will go down to item number 17. Item number 17 is informational items reports from council staff, future agenda item request. Let's go ahead and start. Let's go ahead and start with Mr. McCarthy.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I do have a brief comment here. And I wanted to say that having served in a Navy color guard unit, the American flag is very important to me. And I was shocked that our flag was burned on the lawn at City Hall a week or so ago. While certain people have legitimate grievances, burning our flag, breaking windows, and other acts of violence are completely counterproductive to progress of any kind. So I encourage people to push for justice, but to not adopt counterproductive methods. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Aslan?
I don't, I don't have anything tonight.
Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I also don't have anything tonight. Thank you. Be well, be well, everybody.
Ms. Whelan?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Salas?
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to give a shout-out to every member of Team Flagstaff. Stay well, be well, stay connected. And shout-out to Parks and Rec and library staff for making Halloween happen to a lot of families with physical distancing and with public health and safety in mind. Thank you.
Ms. Odegaard?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Councilmember Salas for her participation in the Discover Flagstaff meeting last week. That was very good. Nice job done. And I want to thank Gail Jackson of Akona and also Jack Fitchett from the city in a meeting we had with a potential employer that might locate here in Flagstaff. That was very well done and, and hopefully success happens with that. And then I also want to thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to sit in on the Arizona Mayor's Education Roundtable today. The main discussion was concerning that cities do have a role concerning education, especially with pre-K education and also career path for youth in the communities. So that was, main topic was cities throughout Arizona do need to play a role, especially in time of COVID, when districts could be struggling. So thank you.
City Manager, did you have anything else to add?
No, Madam Mayor and Council. Thank you for a good meeting, as always.
Okay, well, thank you so much. With that, we are adjourned.